All of us here were given money back, right? Gotta be.
All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, April 1st. Just wait for that to be muted. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin with public comment. Are there any public comments from the board?
No.
All right, are there any public comments from the public?
My name is Darrell Plant, and I live at 490 Lancaster Ave. I stand in opposition to an override for funding our schools. I have a fifth grader currently at Turkey Hill, and so you might ask, what gives? My son and I moved here from Leominster about eight years ago, my son and wife moved here about eight years ago because the schools were highly rated, and they stood close to Groton, Nishoba, Westford, and others. Overall, the Lunenburg community seemed like a good fit. At the time, the school committee had just hired a new superintendent. For the last three to four years, my wife and I participated in many school committee meetings in order to convey our concerns about the direction the schools were going in. We were lone soldiers, and our concerns fell on deaf ears. We came to realize the superintendent was an ideological warrior for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and it was her mission to infuse DEI into every aspect of Lunenburg public schools. Some examples include the hiring of consultants to provide teachers with professional development training on topics such as DEI and critical race theory. They spent $30,000 on an equity audit, followed by the creation of an equity committee, and the restructuring of schedules for all students to include a mandatory social-emotional learning class. After asking the superintendent and other school committee members numerous times to share their definition of equity, the superintendent finally presented this picture. And the school committee gave their full support with the explanation. At the next committee meeting, I told them just how wrong and immoral it was to take away the support from a high achiever and give it to a low achiever, and that all students should be appropriately challenged. I further advised this would lead to an overall decline in academic performance. Today's students, who are in the upper one-third, are languishing, and their futures have been altered forever. This is sick. Lunenburg is now one of the worst-performing districts in the region. About a year and a half ago, we came to the realization that the superintendent and school committee members were like-minded. Nothing was going to change, so we stopped participating in the school committee meetings. For the last few months, we've heard about potential layoffs, and the cutting of AP courses and programs like music, art, as well as increasing user fees for sports and imposing new fees for busing. This has all been done deliberately to shape opinion and gain votes. There is a cancer in our schools, and until it is removed, the patient will not get better. Giving more money to this institution will only prolong the inevitable. In the past, our senior citizens could proudly say, yes, our taxes are high, but I'm willing to sacrifice because we have very good schools. Unfortunately, this is no longer true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plant. Are there any other public comments from the public? Mr. Bowen.
This is like for tall people, sorry. I want to speak about John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. I want to speak about free speech in a public meeting before a public board, specifically speaking the Cemetery Commission's attempt to grade speech on March 27, 2025, claiming publicly in their official capacity that somehow I was providing disinformation, which we know was a false statement of fact, and they opened the door for debate. The First Amendment prohibits government officials from silencing speakers based on their point of view. Silencing is claiming my statements are disinformation. This is called viewpoint discrimination, First Amendment law. When the government discriminates against viewpoints, it is distorting the marketplace of ideas and impeding free trade in ideas by allowing the expression of some ideas but not others. Sometimes, government officials camouflage viewpoint discrimination by contending they are simply protecting the public from offensive or disruptive speech, but as the U.S. Supreme Court made clear in Mattel versus TAM in 2017, giving offense is a viewpoint. The court elaborated on this point two years later in Ayanku versus Burnettti in 2019, explaining that the judgment of whether speech is immoral, scandalous, or otherwise offenses distinguishes between two opposed sets of ideas, those aligned with conventional moral standards and those hostile to them, those inducing societal nods of approval, and those provoking offense and condemnation. To respond to a citizen that their speech is disinformation would take the public comment to debate. This isn't the first time this commissioner has made accusations such. They did it at a town meeting last year, if you remember. Clearly, I believe that not only was my conduct equal to the conduct of the commission, what may appear as disruptive behavior, in its purview, my engagement was equal speech for equal speech. Wherein, if the commission raises their voice to subjugate the speech or basically calling me a liar, then raising a voice is in debate of the issue is the equal and equitable response. Basically, if speech is yelling, or if commenting is debate, then equally yelling and commenting in return is free speech, and it cannot be considered disruptive speech. I just want to be clear. Speech is protected regardless of its manner. I would be glad to highlight additional SCOTUS opinions of what a citizen is allowed to say that could be covered by political speech, as if I was a candidate for office. However, I believe, we know political speech is granted at an even greater latitude for a candidate of public office than it would be protected, okay, and the courts would look upon with more strict scrutiny. Conveniently, I happened to have a conversation with the chief, Thibodeau, who was waiting to meet with the town manager at her office on a separate matter while I was in a meeting with the town manager that she called about this very matter. And upon my own inquiry to him about the matter, he said they do not remove people from public meetings for First Amendment speech, but use de-escalation techniques to allow the free flow of speech in forums like that. Well, I guess calling the police on me would not have worked because no one was coming to put a black bag over anyone's head, zip ties on them, and remove them from a public meeting in the town of Lunenburg. Touche to the chief. What was the issue? DD 214, Social Security numbers, cause of death, contained in a cloud program belonging to a contracted company known as Raymaker Corporation, of which is used as a management tool by the DPW to legally operate the cemetery. These documents are protected, one, by HIPAA, two, by Military Records, the Military Records Act, and under the Privacy Act of 1974.
Mr. Bowen, you have three minutes, if you want to just get to the conclusion.
Well, I'd like you to, if the Chair would just allot me probably another minute and a half, would that suffice?
Just go through really quickly.
Does anyone want the information of how their loved one died in the hands of board members who could change hands every three years by election or by every appointment? What about accessing in a cloud a private server of this information, not a government computer? What happens if this is leaked? Well, your Cemetery Commission is not interested in this, as well as other matters, which are so numerous, I would need about an hour to tell you. I have a couple of emails about this. The first one, Nancy Yasco demanded for password access, which she was shown she could not have access by the DPW director and Heather the Mule, a former town manager, for these exact privacy reasons. However, she demanded Brandon, an employee of Raymaker, to give her a password. I have the email here, if you'd like to see it, which she acquired in March of 2024, against the direction of the town manager and DPW director, as well as I have an email here from Bill Bernard about the Cemetery Commission overstepping their boundary and involving themselves in day-to-day operation, which is under the purview of the DPW and town manager highlighting Section 3.5, the Cemetery Commission in the charter.
All right, Mr. Bowen, you're over four minutes.
I promise, I will not stop challenging this.
Mr. Bowen, you're over four minutes. Please, we have a lot on the agenda tonight.
I understand that, I'm just, I only have about that much left.
We need to continue with the meeting. You know that there's public comment at the end of the meeting, you can finish it then.
I would greatly appreciate that, and thank you very much, but the records issue is a serious issue, and Ms. Lori Trahan is actually spearheading through her own office, okay, the revamping of this, to make sure that public records are not disseminated.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you.
Any other public comments from the public? Seeing none on Zoom, we're going to move on to announcements, and I do have a couple. Dog licenses. Applications for 2025 dog licenses were due today. If you submitted a registration slip, your tags are ready to be picked up at the town clerk's office. Dog tags must be picked up to be considered licensed, so if you haven't done so yet, go to the town clerk's office to pick up your dog tags. Changes in trash pickup routes take effect next week. Some Monday pickup roads are switching to Wednesday, and some Thursday roads are switching to Friday. So if you get your trash picked up on Monday or Thursday and you haven't done so yet, check that list to verify if your day is changing or not. It should have been mailed to you. I received mine, my pickup day is changing. You can find the full list on the town's website, Facebook page, or reach out to our office or the DPW. We can help you verify as well. And finally, the All Vendor Fair. This is the event that Josie Gilchrist gave a presentation on. It'll be on May 10th from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at TC Passios. It's going to be a great community event. There's going to be over 60 vendors, a hayride, live music, food trucks, a dunk tank, and even medieval sword fighting. So I will be there, and I hope you will be attending as well. All right, communications from other boards, I'm not seeing any. So we'll move on to our 7:05 public hearing for flammable storage license for keeping and storing of four 1,000-gallon propane tanks for DeLeo Gas Company on behalf of the owner Sunshine Nominee Trust at 181 Kilburn Street. So I will invite the applicant up to give us a general overview of the application, and I'll also ask the clerk to read the public hearing notice.
The licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, at 7:05 p.m. at Lunenburg Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, on an application from DeLeo Gas Company on behalf of owner Sunshine Nominee Trust for a license for keeping and storage of four 1,000-gallon tanks of propane to be located at the property at 181 Kilburn Street. The property is used as a greenhouse family farm.
Hello, how are you? My name is Brian Sora, I'm with DeLeo Gas, and I'm here as well with, well, I'm here on behalf of and with Sunshine Nominee Trust for the license that we have in front of you for the keeping and storage of four 1,000-gallon propane tanks to be located at over at 181 Kilburn Street. This is going to be used for a greenhouse and family farm. We've come before you in the past on a separate greenhouse and are hoping to increase our capacity at that location for a separate greenhouse and be able to power the greenhouse with its own propane storage tanks, a good distance away from the existing one that we have on site right now. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. We have gone, we have had communications with the fire department, but the owner of my company has spoken with Lieutenant, and I apologize ahead of time, Lecaditis? Close enough, perfect. And by their account, you know, everything looks good in terms of the plan. Of course, they would go and do a final inspection should we receive approval, and would need to confirm all NFPA codes are being followed. One thing that they did mention was that they would like to see crash protection on site around the tanks, just in case, you know, any sort of field's being plowed, that there's protection there. And we have already, ready to go onsite, 14 Jersey barriers that we prepared to use for that crash protection around the propane tanks as well. So happy to answer any questions that you all have, or anybody, you know, any members that are here as well.
All right, thank you. I'll open it up to the board with any questions.
How, oh, sorry.
Good.
How close is this to the other set of tanks? Is it on the plot plane somewhere?
So, the one that I have, and I'm not sure if this was the screenshot that you all had received, but it is not on this map. It's a good distance away. I don't have the exact footage, but this kind of provides a scale. This is at least 25 feet from that greenhouse there, so, again, without the exact measurement, you know, we're talking quite a few hundred feet away.
Okay, and we ask if it's close by, is it going to be essentially like having eight tanks?
Got it, understood.
And it would be actually, if the fire chief isn't concerned about the location.
Can I address that?
Yep, just coming up to the podium.
There might be a little bit of, excuse me, there might be a little bit of confusion on that. Before, actually, we came forth board last year for our site at Northfield Road, and we had four tanks set up at 647 Northfield Road, and then at 677 Northfield Road. But this would be a site that we farm on Lancaster Ave, and we have an entrance on Goodrich Street as well, so it's miles away.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I remember last year, and I didn't remember the exact location.
Yeah, and the farm name would be Dix Marque Garden.
Okay, thank you.
And sorry, I should have brought this up, can you just state your name and address for the record?
My name's Stephen Violet, 677 Northfield Road, Lunenburg.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Just, it looks like everything is all set. I see the email from the chief as well, all set, and as long as there's no concerns, I have no further questions.
Michael Ray?
So, looking at our policy on this, it says an application for the use of land for inflamables shall be accompanied by the following tax certification form, a plot plan showing the location of the storage tank for crude petroleum or any of its products, location of any building or structure for any other flammables, inflamables, location of septic systems, location of well, et cetera. Can you just direct me in your application for where we can see that at?
So I was not the person who submitted the application, I don't have that. I was just given an over, an aerial view here to present to you also. I apologize in advance, I don't have that on me in terms of submitted material here.
We can talk through it. As you look at the plan that you have, are you aware of where the septic system is on this property?
I couldn't have Steve speak on this, but this is a greenhouse with a barn, but I'll let Stephen.
So the site actually is an APR site, and we're quite a distance off of Lancaster Ave. There's no septic systems on site. As far as flammable storage, we would have one diesel tank on site, but that would be probably 4,000 feet away from where this tank would be. And it would be on a separate parcel of land that's not 181, but it would be 554 Lancaster Ave.
Okay. So, the next question is on, you know, related to the abutters. So the map that we see doesn't really show us where the abutters are in relation to them, it's a little challenging, but we do have, you know, the abutters list. So can you just help, I guess, as best you can, since we don't have the plan, can you just kind of help orient us to how close this is to the next residential property line?
Yep, so it would be the closest house that would be, would be on Lancaster Ave, on the corner of Lancaster Ave and Kilburn, and would be the house I would see right there, kind of on the map. I don't know if you have a map like this at all?
Yeah, yeah.
On the abutters map, then, where?
Yeah, I was just looking at the abutters map to try to figure it out.
Because we don't see Lancaster Ave on this, so it's hard to tell.
Yeah, we don't see it on the abutters either, but there are a lot.
The closest house to the proximity would be, I'm going to take a stab at it, but would be, I'm going to say 3,000 feet.
So just looking at the two maps, it looks like the tank, you can kind of see Kilburn on the bottom, right? It looks like there's a little curve, so it looks like it's located basically in the middle of this lot right here.
There's only four Lancaster addresses on the list, so it's got to be one of those, Lancaster Ave.
So the property, maybe a little bit of confusion on it, we're actually entering, a lot of times we enter the site from 554 Lancaster Ave, and then the site is 181, and there's an additional access on Kilburn Street, which we kind of go over with the bridge that we had.
So are you just, Michael Ray, are you still looking to be oriented to where exactly the tanks are going on that abutters?
Yeah, so.
Okay, so can I just show you this?
Sure.
Because I don't know if you've seen this. Do you mind just like pointing it, so we can just generally see?
That's what I'm going to say.
Yeah, that's fine.
So it would be 21, I believe, would be the closest house right here.
Okay.
All right, so let me go back to the.
All right, thank you, Steve.
I'll come back to any questions. Thank you.
All right, I don't have any questions, this is a public hearing, so we can open it up to the public, if anyone wants to comment or make any, ask any questions. I do see someone on Zoom that has their hand raised. Devin. Just state your name and address.
Hi, yes. Devin Shea, 612 Lancaster Ave. I believe we, so we are the house on the corner of Kilburn and Lancaster that was referenced. I believe that we are the closest abutting neighbor. And just curious, is the plan for the tanks that they're going to be dropped in the ground and buried, or are they above ground?
Through the chair, I can answer that. Those will be above ground.
Above ground, okay. Where in, so like, from our backyard, like, we can see the big greenhouse, where in relation from the greenhouse and our house are those tanks going to be?
They're going to be about 25 feet further into where the clearings are, where the pasture are, so away from the woodland and away from where Kilburn Street actually is, it would be further into the farmland.
So like, past the greenhouse?
Do you know the existing greenhouse that's already there?
Yes.
So it would be in between the existing greenhouse and the new greenhouse, but still set back another 30, it's 35 feet from the new construction, and also the tanks would be going further from where your house is towards the woodline. But it would be, if you needed a reference point, or a reference point would be kind of, if you brought the furthest edge of the greenhouse that's existing, straight across the field, and then took 30 feet from the existing greenhouse, that's where they would be.
Gotcha, okay.
Does that make sense, or?
Yes.
We're sharing the map, so maybe you might be able to see it now, for those on Zoom.
Yeah.
Are the tanks, are the tanks enclosed by a fencing or something?
They're going to have Jersey barriers surrounding them on all four sides, so that's for the crash protection, and they're already on site.
Mr. Plant? Just come up, just come up to the podium, name and address again.
Darrell Plant, 490 Lancaster Ave, I'm his neighbor, an abutter. Simple question. Last year, they redrew the lines on the new, on the water protection districts. You now clearly do fall within Zone 2. I know you're a farm. How does this line up in terms of those new regs and what's required of you? Thank you.
I can speak to the propane storage portion of it, so anytime that a tank is to be buried in the ground, if there's wetlands or anything involving water, we will generally put tie-downs on that and anchor it down with concrete pads so that they don't tip over or float if there's any flooding. In the case of above-ground tanks, we don't really run into that issue, there wouldn't be a need for it. I will point out that propane is non-toxic, it's a non-contaminant, so in terms of contact with water, it does not contaminate water at all. It's a clean burning fuel source, and so, you know, in a situation where it came into contact of it, it would just dissipate, there would be no contamination to any water. I hope that answers the question.
Does that line up with the regs, the new regs that were drawn in terms of allowable uses?
Do you want to just repeat that question, if you don't want to come up? So you're asking if it, come on up to the podium.
There's a whole, last year when they passed this, right, at town meet?
Just start at the podium.
Yeah, last year when they passed this at town meet, it gave a whole list of do's and don'ts within that district. Does it line up? That's all, with the regs.
I don't know, I can't speak to it, I don't know if you can.
Yeah, as we understand it, there is not. We are in front of you all for a special permit because of the capacity here, so we're certainly north of what the propane capacity is by right, which is why we're seeking the approval for the special permit. So on, in that instance, we're not, which is why we're here. And the reason for the increased storage is to eliminate the need for vehicles, diesel trucks, to be constantly commuting in and out of that neighborhood area. These greenhouses, those heating units that are inside of those have such a high BTU rate that we need the additional capacity in order for that to efficiently run and run for a length enough time that you're not having diesel trucks backing in and out of there and disrupting the neighborhood so frequently.
So I understand your reasoning, but I don't think you answered the citizen's question. So have you checked with Zone 2, water district, you know, allow, what's allowed in that area, or do you need to check with, you know, either the water district or the Conservation Commission about it? That's, I think, what the question is.
We've had, we've had no indication that this was. I mean, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but planning, fire has not indicated that we're in any sort of obstruction to what that district allows for.
Yeah, it wouldn't be under fire, so.
Just, just meaning all the boards and committees that we've gone in front of. Conservation Commission, our engineers go through that and make sure that if there's any, like, we do have to go in front of Conservation Commissions all the time with different projects that we do. This did not, by all accounts, there was no indications that we needed to go in front of Conservation. Again, I don't have the bylaw to source it myself, that's why, I just don't want to speak out of context.
May I ask a question?
And I would say through the chair too, you could, with your approval, condition it that it is conditioned to be approved, you know, under the condition that it adheres to that district.
Right.
Did you check with Conservation first?
I have not directly.
You said you have not had any indication, but what has led to the lack of indication?
Well, we hire engineers to go through and read the bylaws and everything, and they're the ones that would have indicated if there was an issue with it.
So the map that I'm looking, so I went to Google Maps on this one, because, you know, the plan that you provided, you know, it's a little different than I think what the policy says, but, you know, these things can be overcome. But the, as I look at the Google map, it looks as if the greenhouse itself is pretty close to a large wetland system that's part of the, I never say it right, Catacuna.
Catacuna.
That Catacuna mug brook, and so all of this is kind of in that general area, you know, and it's pretty close from what we can see in the map, as I'm looking at it now from what I can determine to be a wetland system. You know, it would be.
Can I get to that one?
Sure.
So we did, I did contact, you know, did have some meetings with the Conservation, and we did have hired out a Conservation consultant too, Tommy Christopher. So we went over it, and we did speak, and we brought the greenhouse actually further into the field that was already in sight of what we were already into production, and his feeling was that we were outside any of the limits of buffer zones of the brook.
Okay, did they, were they, did they provide you any statement or email to that effect?
No, we were going with our consultants.
You were on that site visit with them?
With the, with the consultant, yes.
How far, where you moved it to now, how far is it from the brook?
I would say it's 200 feet.
Okay.
We took that into consideration.
So if we want to get a clear opinion on whether or not it falls in either of the zones for the wetland protection by law, we could continue the public hearing and have the building commissioner, who's the zoning enforcement officer, weigh in, so that is an option, but, Rhonda Lucio, go ahead.
Rhonda Lucio, 181 Reservoir Road. It's my recollection and understanding that the water district protection area is designated by the DEP, not Conservation, not the water district, so that's my comment. Thanks.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like Conservation or the Water District would really weigh in here on this, it seems like it would be our building commissioner who would, who would know about that.
So I, I, yeah, I don't know if the.
I'm not sure of the building commissioner, all I would say is that the offer, and that was going to be my, my tack as well, was to condition it, but whoever has to give us approval that in a Zone 2 water protection area.
Yeah.
I mean, we could get our own Conservation to talk about the Catacuna mug issue, and we should, but for the Zone 2 water protection area, we need to go to the authority on that, and I don't know who that is, whether it's directly to Mass DEP, or whether it's the Water District themselves that could say it, but we need something.
Jen, are you, do you know who would have the best?
This bylaw isn't even on the general code online, so I can't see it to refer to it, to.
Planning Board has it, because that's what we pass, so.
All right, Rhonda, go ahead.
Rhonda Lucio, 181 Reservoir Road, again. Isn't.
Rhonda Lissio, 181 Reservoir Road, again. Isn't there also a right to farm bylaw or something in this town?
We're not stopping them from farming.
Well, what I'm saying is, I think it allows for certain things that wouldn't normally be allowed by Conservation.
Well, that might be true. I mean, but they're coming to us for a special permit, so there's a lot of different factors that we have to balance and, and, you know, approve. I don't disagree with you. I just, we'd want to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed here.
And I certainly appreciate you all's due diligence. By no means am I, you know. I would ask that if you had no other issues with this, that you offer an approval with that condition that there's, you know, Conservation says that there's no, we're happy to go in front of Conservation by all means, answer any questions, and triple-check to make sure that, you know, we adhere to any issues there. Again, I'll just speak to the propane itself. It's non-toxic. We, you know, we do follow all codes, regulations. Everything will pass any inspections that are there, whether it's NFPA. And again, happy to, to go through any other boards or committees. I would just ask if there was no other issues that you all had. And by all means, if you have more questions, I'm happy to answer more.
Go ahead, Renee.
I would add, in addition to Conservation, I mean, I'm looking at the GIS map, and it's definitely in the Zone 2, which is, that's where the water comes in and feeds into the water supply. So I don't know if that's the Water District and/or DEP, because DEP sets the guidelines, but Water District can make them more strict. But I think we need.
To be, as I'm thinking about it, I think the Water District doesn't have jurisdiction because the town, it's a town land, and so the town makes the districts, if anything, Mass DEP has the overarching authority on what happens in the Zone 2.
I don't know what's allowed, I mean, because it's propane, I don't know.
Yeah, and again, it's a non-contaminant, so we generally don't ever run into issues with DEP. The other alternatives here would be diesel, which is a byright, you know, under the silicon burn rates, which is a much higher greenhouse gas emitter, and it's, you know, would be a contaminant if spilled. Those types of fuel sources have, you know, contain fuel, spill containment systems that are needed, which is usually when you run into DEP, EPA regulations that we need to adhere to. But propane is an EPA-certified clean alternative fuel, which is generally why it doesn't need to go to that extent with these types of systems.
Michael Ray.
So broadly speaking, you know, Stephen and his family have run a really good business here in town. No questions about, you know, no question about that at all. And I think that it's pretty clear that this would be supportive to the business. And so broadly speaking, you know, I support the request. I'm a little hesitant, though, with the conditional approval you're requesting today. I, you know, my mindset is more.
Can I cut you off before we go in, because I just read the, that bylaw? And it says right in it that in the prohibited uses in Zone 2, it talks about fuel, and then it says except for liquefied petroleum gas.
Which is what this is.
So it clearly is stated it's not prohibited.
Yeah, okay.
In the bylaw. I mean, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I just wanted to say it before you kept going.
Thank you, Amanda.
So what would be helpful to me, thank you, Amanda, for that as well, what would be helpful to me is, is to get some confirmation that there's no impact from Conservation. I mean, you know, we could certainly do a conditional. I mean, you know, if the response is that there needs to be modifications to the plan, you're back in front of us anyway to be able to get, you know, something modified and to get approval again. So it just seems, in my opinion, as a member, you know, I certainly support it, don't really see much conflict. I think in the course of like, a week or two, you know, that a dot could be crossed, and a T could, you know, T could be crossed, a dot could be I, I could be dotted, and then we don't have any of these questions, and then that way we could just get a clean approval for the whole thing. That's, you know, my inclination. But I don't have any concerns for what you've presented here today, aside from, you know, in the future. I know that when you came across for Northfield, one of the things that was really important was seeing that site plan that shows, you know, all these different features that the policy requires. So that way, you know, you don't get hit, you know, this could be a five-minute kind of request here. But the questions are because we don't have all that data. But certainly, I think you've been a, clearly, you guys have done a great job in the past. We've had no issues with the other tank that was installed. And again, I don't have any major concerns. I just don't want to step on someone else's toes.
Yeah, and just respectfully back, the reason why I would, I'm suggesting go that way is just because we don't know if there's any reason for us to go in front of Conservation. And, and like Madam Moore had said, that it specifically states that propane's not prohibited. So I'm just offering that as an olive branch to continue on and gladly meet with people despite it not being something that we need to, but not have a provider hurdle if it's not necessary, not something that we would be required to do anyways.
So I'll ask the board, do we want them to go before the Conservation Commission?
I don't know if they need to go before them, as much as just meet with the agent, get an email that says not applicable.
Or feedback from the Conservation Commission?
Feedback, yes.
Yes, from the agent, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're all sort of.
Just one final.
With that, but do we want to approve the license with that condition, that the Conservation agent provides positive feedback?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it. I don't have strong feelings in either way. I can see it go either way.
Yeah, all right.
I support the board. My feelings aren't that strong. It's just a preference.
All right, Amanda.
I could be getting confused. I'm still just looking at the, that what passed the last town meeting, and it says the special permit appointing, approval authority is the planning board. Is that something separate?
That has to be something separate, yeah. It's definitely not for this.
Okay. I would be happy to approve it with the condition in that case.
I mean, I think there's a license requirement here, right?
Right.
Which is what we're doing. And then there's a site plan requirement, which is totally separate.
Yes.
Have you gone through the planning board and gotten site plan approval for any of this?
We have not yet, as far as I understand. This is just for the license for the additional propane storage capacity of north of 2,000 gallons.
So that kind of complicates a little more.
Okay.
I mean, doesn't, my concern here is, you know, typically, right, I mean, what you would, I used to be on the planning board. Typically, you'd, you'd get, you know, site plan approval, make sure everything's good. That makes the second approval for the license easier, because it's like, hey, someone's already looked at this, have already reviewed it, everything's good to go. Here you go, here's a license, it all complies. But what we're doing essentially is a little backwards, where we're going to give a license for something that's conditional on other people's approval, that, you know, they may make some changes and modifications.
In my experience, and we do this, you know, it's oftentimes, we do this for temporary heat, farmlands, for our own propane storage, because our tanks are in excess of 30,000 gallons. It's generally viewed as two different conversations. So for you all, it's a fundamental question of if you're okay with propane storage capacity north of 2,000 gallons. And so, as we've always interpreted it, whether it's board of selection first, planning board second, or vice versa, we have two separate conversations to make. So I don't think it, I mean, that kind of just is, I guess, we're essentially posing that question to you without it needing to be a planning board, because it's, I guess, it's questions I need to go to each of you individually, and albeit to a.
I don't think you're hearing any opposition to the size.
Yeah.
You know, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I don't know, anyone's commented on the size or concerns about it.
But is that what we're, is that all we're being asked?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the license.
Yep.
Yep, just for the capacity. So my opinion hasn't changed at all.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, even in terms of Conservation, it's fine if we want to have that conditional approval. I don't mind that at all. But, all right, it sounds like we're maybe talking a little more than we need to here. I think we're all sort of on the same page. So is there a motion?
First, close the public hearing.
Oh, okay, my apologies. All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The public hearing is now closed. All right, is there a motion on the license application?
Move that we conditionally approve the license for the flammable storage license for the four 1,000-gallon propane tanks for DeLeo Gas Company on behalf of Sunshine Nominee Trust at 181 Kilburn Street, on the approval of Conservation.
Agent.
Agent, thank you.
Yep.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming in tonight, both of you.
Appreciate the time.
And I just want to note for both of you, and also the board, there was a typo on the license, so we're going to have to reprint it and then sign it at a later date. So.
Needs to be conditioned anyway, so.
Yeah, true. And that is, okay, I didn't realize that you put that on. Oh, what you're saying is that you didn't give it out anyway.
Correct.
So, okay, I bet, never mind.
Good. I appreciate the ability to answer your questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, ambulance write-off request by Fire Chief and Finance Director.
Hello, everybody.
Greetings.
So we're here with our quarterly write-off, our ambulance uncollectible receipts. The current total is $19,546.36. Do you want to add anything?
That's, those are the ones that will be, they're still going out to collection, or they're just being, this is a financial thing to write them off as a liability off the town's books. For the future, we've discussed with the town manager, we'll probably go to semi-annually instead of quarterly on this, not to take up you guys' time more often than needed. It's probably easier just to do it twice a year.
Any questions?
What is, just, I do have one question, not to belabor this, but what is our collection success rate on this, this percentage? Do we get 10% of what we try to collect, 20, none?
I could get the number for you. I just don't have it in front of me, but, yeah.
Again, challenges about 60, about two-thirds of what we bill out is fixed rate, Medicare, Medicaid, Mass Health.
No, I understand, yeah. I understand. I'm just interested.
What we get is two different things.
I figured since you're going to bring up every time, it's still going to collections, I would bring up, how much are we successful at it?
I could post some statistics for you. Absolutely.
Better than I do. I'd say we're on par with most communities like us.
That doesn't sound anywhere near a number. But, okay, great. We're on par. I feel better now.
Any other questions? All right.
Make a motion that we approve or accept the ambulance write-off request as presented by Chief Sullivan as Fire Chief and Ezekiel Laiala as the Finance Director.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you both for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have the State of the Organization presentation. So it's a review of recent employee separations and exit interviews by the Assistant Town Manager.
We're good to go?
No.
Okay. Well, hello?
So there's actually two presentations.
Yes.
You're doing the State of the Organization, and then you're also doing the SAP.
Back to back.
Where do you want to start? You want to start with the State?
The org, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We'll start there. Jen started.
Good to see you, Julie.
Hey, how are you?
Hey, it's Sharon.
It's up.
We're good, okay. Hello, good evening. So before I begin, I just want to acknowledge your patience as I provide this update. The request for the five years' worth of State of the Organization was made in August of 2024. And while there was initial confusion as what the actual request was, the interim town manager eventually clarified that the focus was on vacancy data, including reasons for employee departures, the duration of open positions, and other contributing factors. Compiling this information required extensive time and effort to review personnel files, position records, and determine what details of the exit interviews could be shared publicly. With the departure of the town manager and the onboarding of an interim town manager, the organization experienced rapid transitions and a heavier daily workload, which included the preparation of additions and revisions to the SAP for special town meeting. Simultaneously, we worked on nearly three dozen procurement projects requiring IFBs, RFPs, and/or RFQs and contracts. This includes ARPA, which you know had to be committed by December 31 of 2024, all while continuing recruitment efforts, which took precedence. Given these pressing priorities, the request was temporarily deprioritized. While I acknowledge the delay, I trust the circumstances are understood. Back in December, I polled the HR listserv and asked other communities, specifically in North Central Mass, if they were experiencing higher-than-usual turnover, employee morale issues, and recruitment challenges. The limited responses received said that staff turnover is higher due to increased workloads, competition with private sector jobs, employees seeking better pay, flexibility, and/or less public abuse. They also said that morale has declined with rise in public hostility being a key reason. To address this, the community increased pay, introduced sign-on bonuses, and offered unique benefits like healthcare opt-out and childcare vouchers. Another community said that they were not experiencing higher-than-normal turnover, but typical turnover. They also said that morale had bounced back after COVID, and they're working in this area to keep the culture strong. As for recruitment, constantly reviewing compensation and making adjustments has been successful for them. Overall, our community is not alone in the retention of employees. As requested, below is an overview, or in the screen, of the employee departures over the past two years, an analysis of key contributing factors, and what our plan is to address them. So for employee departures over the past two years, there were 38 total departures. This consists of five call-fire positions, 21 full-time, of which six were retirements, 12 part-time positions, of which two were retirements. The primary reasons for departure, again, eight were retirement in total, one termination, two career changes, going to the Mass State Police, or just choosing to do a different line of work. One was not a good fit for them. Two were non-responsive, which is typically with call-fire. If they're not responding to the work, then we have to replace them. And then two moved. The biggest category was 22 and personal, personal/nue-job. So the comments shared through exit interviews, and in no specific order, were commission expectations, other summer commitment, second job leads to long days, conflict with supervisor, lack of communication with upper management and/or conflict, lack of tools, town politics, wages, focus on education, external working conditions, influences from boards or committees resulting in town management decisions that were not necessarily in the best interest of the town, need for more hours, health issues, munis issues, lack of understanding from boards and committees. So the findings through exit interviews, as you may know, exit interviews are conducted with myself as the Assistant Town Manager and HR Director with the employee. This is where the exiting employee and I go through the exit interview questionnaire and discuss their experience while working for the town. We start off with the first question being, what influenced you to leave? Most will answer new job, but this question goes deeper. What caused them to look for a new job? Most common responses are need more hours or career change slash growth. Wages can play a part, but if employees are happy, they would tend to stay. Unfortunately, sometimes employees are just unhappy and resign. Other questions asked during the interviews focus on the work environment, their supervisor and/or department head, advancement opportunities, and whether they would recommend the town as a place to work, and of course, their comments and suggestions. Commonly, the response to would you recommend the town as a place to work is yes, it's a great place to work, the people, but the wages could be better. Less common were morale or conflict. Exit interviews are shared with the town manager, and if appropriate, I will discuss the interview with the department head to seek clarification and work on improvement. Unfortunately, whether a position vacated is 10 hours or 40 hours, the departments feel the impact, especially in those departments that are two-person department. Upon written resignation, the vacant positions appropriately posted. Most common are on our internal bulletin boards in each building, our town website, social media, the Lunenburg Ledger, Indeed, and if applicable, also on association pages, MMA, handshake, Chamber of Commerce, and/or mass hire. We recently started a town LinkedIn page, so this will be added to the list soon. There is strong effort to fill a position immediately. However, the pool of candidates is often slim, especially for those more specialized positions. With this said, sometimes a crucial position to the town remains vacant for months. Finding qualified candidates in these specialized positions is becoming more and more sparse, and we're also competing with area communities that are also recruiting for the same position, providing the candidate options based on location and rate of pay. Using the land director, land use director position as an example, as this was one of the longest vacancies in my time here, this position was attracting planners with no experience in oversea and building or conservation. This position is responsible for oversea and those operations, and therefore it is crucial that the candidate have knowledge in these areas. Another reason this position remained vacant for so long was that it was rumored that the town is not a good place to work due to politics. that the town is not a good place to work due to politics. And planners just want to be planners and not have supervisory responsibility of oversea and building and conservation. And lastly, the rate of pay. Those in planning positions are already making a similar salary to what we were offering without the responsibilities of a land use director. Each position in its own is unique, and some fill quicker than others. Those positions that take longer is not due to a lack of effort on myself or the department heads, but for the reasons that I've just explained. In addition, positions, position postings are frequently updated and reposted. There have been times that I've had to reach out to my network and/or other communities to try to attract employees from other communities. Poaching is not something that we love to do, but sometimes you have to get creative when you're hiring from a limited pool. So the resolution, to mitigate turnover and improve employee retention, we have or will be implementing the following strategies. Number one, retention and engagement initiatives. This contains salary reviews, in-house trainings, professional development, employee listening sessions, employee luncheons, goal-setting, and last year, we implemented employee service awards, which were given at an employee luncheon. Number two, recruitment and hiring adjustments. At the special town meeting, the SAP added part-time employee benefits such as holiday pay, vacation and sick time benefits, which is not the norm for part-time positions, and merit awards. A wider and more competitive salary range for positions would vastly improve the recruitment of quality candidates and retain the quality employees that the town already employs. Number three, workplace enhancements. Most departments work Monday through Thursday, which offers an attractive work-life balance. We're working more strategically on succession planning and providing employee opportunities for career growth. We're working on ways to bring not only departments but buildings together and decrease the current feel of segregation through group activities, such as the employee listening sessions, luncheons, group trainings. We implemented an employee newsletter one year ago this month with the goal of increasing communication, highlighting the work of our departments and employees, as well as a way to introduce new hires and a way to get to know your fellow employees, to name a few. We recognize the importance of employer retention and are committed to strengthening our workforce. We will continue to monitor these efforts and provide periodic updates if requested. However, there is nothing unusual with what we've experienced in the past two years.
All right, thank you, Julie. I'll open it up to questions or comments on this one before we move to the SAP. Doesn't sound like there are any.
Yeah, no, I Julie, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Great presentation and what you put together was a was a, you know.
Long time coming.
As you know, I was a staffer, I sat with you during this interview. I think you did a good job capturing at least my knowledge of some of the comments. I think I've heard and I've seen some positive changes in our environment here in town and our culture. So I hope, you know, we continue moving in that path. So I appreciate you coming in and making the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, want to move on to the SAP then?
Sure, it's really dry.
Just give me one second.
We can.
I know I gotta.
Pass you up.
Thank you for that, Julie.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think while we're pulling the next one up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That was a really good presentation. You know, I mean, obviously, you know, we hear things as members, you know, of the select board and, you know, sometimes staff ask to meet with us and they grumble and then we refer them back over to, you know, departments, but sometimes you hear things that are really concerning. You know, I think that, you know, much of what you've kind of highlighted here are things that we have heard. I think some of the, you know, I know that there have been a couple of occasions where we knew like job postings would expire over a weekend or something like that. Of course, as elected members, most of our time is the weekend, so we're pulling things up on a Saturday and you're like, it just expired on Friday. So, you know, but definitely, I just want to comment that we're definitely moving in the right direction. So thank you for your, all of your contributions.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, it's up, whenever you want to start.
Okay. All right, so this presentation is an update on an overview of the FY26 salary schedule for the salary administration plan, also known as the SAP for short, and the process conducted. So the goal is to ensure fairness, competitiveness, and transparency in employee compensation while maintaining fiscal responsibility. The process began with a salary survey that was sent to all twenty-three competitive communities that were approved by the select board in December of 2024. Of these twenty-three communities, fourteen responded even after numerous email attempts to gather this information. The purpose of conducting the surveys is not only to gather data, but also highlights any misclassifications in our classification schedule, as well as visually show our market competitiveness. Conducting salary surveys is a process that is used when evaluating all units in town and ensures alignment with economic conditions and industry standards. It should be noted that surveys are driven by data and not employees' wants or needs. The data collected from the survey shows that there are some positions below market competitiveness, which would require reclassification, some that are correctly classified, and some that are above market. In order to correct this, a full compensation and classification study should be done. We've attempted to do this twice, once with a consultant and once in-house with the personnel board. Unfortunately, both were not advanced. Process for the salary adjustments. Number one is a salary review. So each year or each time that a salary or contract is expiring, in this case, the salary schedule, is reviewed to assess the cost of live-in adjustments, the COLA, and market comparability by comparing salaries in comparable communities to maintain competitiveness. Number two, the budget considerations. Adjustments are subject to budget constraints and approval during the annual budgeting process. Number three, the approval process. Any proposed changes to the salary schedule historically have been reviewed by the personnel board. In the absence of the personnel board and per-town bylaws, the town manager acts as the personnel board. Both the finance director and town manager have reviewed this data before tonight's presentation. We received some feedback from the SAP employees. So after the March nineteenth select board meeting, several SAP employees reached out to the town manager on the proposed FY26 two-and-a-half percent COLA. The town manager and I held an SAP meeting with the employees on March 25th to discuss the proposed FY26 salary schedule. The concerns shared from the group were identified as lack of parity between the SAP and clerical union, who is going to be receiving a five-and-a-half percent increase, as well as internal equity. The town manager explained that adjusting the COLA is not likely a long-term fix, but an intermediary measure until a classification and compensation study is conducted and implemented through the town meeting process. Employees expressed a strong desire for the town manager to consider three percent COLA in lieu of the two-and-a-half percent. While this meeting was focused on the FY26 schedule, employees raised concerns about the lack of a personnel board and the process in the absence of the board. The town manager explained that she has had an employee working group put forward recommendations on the future of the personnel board to the select board in the coming months. Additionally, employees were in favor of having professional classification and compensation study done in FY27. All agree that current position classifications need to be revised. So my recommendations. Number one, I am recommending a three percent COLA for FY26. The cost of a three percent COLA is roughly forty-three thousand, four hundred and six dollars, which is an approximate increase just shy of seventy-three hundred dollars compared to the cost of a two-and-a-half percent COLA. This is for about forty-four employees. Continue conducting regular salary surveys to ensure competitiveness. Hire a consultant to redo our classification and compensation plan for FY27, and allocate budgetary provisions to accommodate necessary salary adjustments for FY27 while ensuring fiscal sustainability. In conclusion, a well-structured salary schedule and process are essential for attracting and retaining qualified employees while adhering to budgets. I'm here to ask for the select board's approval on the proposed FY26 schedule of three percent COLA for SAP employees. Although results of the survey indicate that we are competitive in some positions and not in others, an extra half a percent will help boost the employee morale while remaining fiscally conservative. In addition, this process made it apparent that restructuring is vital in maintaining an effective and equitable hiring and retainage salary schedule. One position highlighted over the recent past studies and continues to be well below benchmark. To address this, a separate article has been put forward to reclassify the DPW director from grade sixteen to seventeen. Also, within the same article, we're creating a new position entitled Communications and IT Manager. This position is not intended to add headcount, but will take on more outreach, communications, and serve as the liaison before between our IT consultant and the town. In the coming months, I will begin the process to conduct a classification and compensation study through an external consultant and will keep the board informed of this process through the town manager. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Julie. Open it up to questions and comments again.
I do have two, so I'll just jump to the conclusion part. So I support three percent COLA because I think that the input from the SAP employees is accurate, that it is below regional averages. So I think this is something we can do even at the seventy-one or seventy-two hundred dollars. I do have two questions. You say that the communications and IT manager won't add headcount, but do we have one now?
This would be an expansion on a position that we have. So since we had the interim town manager, the administrative assistant for IT has taken on the responsibility.
So it's a reclassification?
Essentially with a new title.
Okay, all right. The last one is the DPW director, who I, in looking at salaries and averages in the area, I agree is extremely below benchmark and I'm questioning whether one grade is sufficient. I mean, if you're going to use the word extremely and you're going to bump up somebody one grade, that seems hardly to address the fact that it's extremely below benchmark.
I think this is the first step in then having the consultant come in and identify because the ultimate goal is, well, number one, we have way too many pay grades. We don't need twenty. We have forty employees in the SAP, forty active positions. So that's way too many grades for that that number of positions. So I think giving this boost to seventeen right now and then re-looking at the salary schedule, condensing some positions, and making it more equitable across the board would help. And maybe it will go higher, but at this time, I think this is the right move.
Yeah, I mean, I will piggyback this, this particular thing with your prior report, which is if we're looking to not lose people and DPW skills are, you know, highly sought, I would hate to lose a DPW director who I think is excellent because we didn't pay him not once, but twice now. Because we didn't get the raise that we did last time, I mean, this is the time to address it. And so I, again, I question, what is the difference in scale, the pay rate from sixteen to seventeen?
Ezzy. Ezzy?
Yeah, I have the salary, I just need to know where he's at in sixteen right now. So if we're looking at the three percent chart, so we go with the three percent COLA compared to, I don't have where we are now, but looking at the three percent, the range would be forty-eight, seventy-nine to sixty dollars and one cent for grade sixteen, which is where this position is currently classified. Boosting to grade seventeen, that range goes from fifty-three, twenty to sixty-five, forty-three. I believe he falls somewhere around.
So they're all about five dollars an hour, five dollar.
I'm sorry?
It's a five dollar an hour increase from sixteen to seventeen. That's what I'm seeing.
Depending where he falls, yeah.
For each step, you're not talking about changing steps, same step, just going to grade seventeen-ish, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but knowing the hourly rate doesn't, I mean, I don't think in hourly rate, I think in salary rate.
You have to do the math. For forty hours, five dollar increase is ten thousand, four hundred dollar increase. I will say, well, in response, if I may, in response to your observation that it's still low, I think you're probably accurate. I think my concern here is that there's other folks who are also potentially low, just not as low, and I'm concerned about a disparate treatment of those individuals. And we're saying that we are planning to look at this holistically and do a classification compensation study. I don't, I'd be concerned if we jumped two steps and and don't at the same time now bring in other folks that may be below grade. He was extremely below grade, but I hear for retention as well, that there's a, you know.
Again, I'm just reading the words of the report that we're in, I didn't write the report.
Yep.
All I'm saying is that if somebody's going to indicate to me that they're extremely low and their response is they're going to move them up one grade, that's, they're low or they're, you know, relatively low. I didn't use the word extremely, it's in the report. So I'm only using that, that's all I'm saying.
Amanda, go ahead.
I have a lot of thoughts on the SAP, so I'll try to be as brief as I can. But first, can we see the data, the survey? When did you do that survey? You said you got fourteen responses. Be shared with us.
I can share it with you.
I'd like to know, you know, where they actually land so I can look at it, you know. I think many people know I've been, I pay attention to this very closely. I'd like to know what was presented to the employees as well as what the financial impact, this is probably more for you, Jen. You know, is this included, these increases, are these included in your budget already that you've proposed to us?
So the way that this, the way that this rolled out was that I had said the two-point-five percent increase at the last meeting, right? And that was included in the budget. And when the employees heard that, that's when they requested a meeting to come in and have a conversation about, you know, really, they were asking for a whole-scale classification compensation, but that's not reality. Or just to simply say, the clerical union is getting five-point-five percent increases, therefore, we should get five-point-five increases. That was not, but that was not justified by the data that we were seeing at the time, right? So, so in terms, that's, that was the conversation with the employees. Hearing, basically hearing their concerns and then going back and looking at the math. In terms of the seven thousand, we have salary reserves set aside. It doesn't encompass that additional seven thousand, but between people who will be coming and going within the organization, people who are leaving, I'm sure, I'm not concerned about absorbing that within the budget, that small amount.
So I appreciate that and I appreciate that you're willing to work with the employees. I would just like to see it, you know, what the comparables were. Because before I agree with three, you know, is it enough? I think that was one of the things that Tom was just talking about. You know, should it be three-point-five, should it be four? Maybe three is great, but I would just like to be able to make my own opinion by looking at the comparables and what the financial impact actually is, just to make sure. I totally understand, we can't just, we can't give away things we don't have and we need to do a full analysis, but I just would like to see it myself. And then that communications position, I think you already touched on this, but that's something that you did include already in the expanded hours for the IT position in your budget.
Yes.
Okay. And then have you been talking to the DPW director about this change in his salary?
I have not, I think this was kind of already underway in advance, yeah.
Okay, and he's amenable to it or does he have thoughts on or or just sort of seeing where?
I think there's more thoughts.
Okay.
I think he's happy, I think.
It's a start?
It's a start.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep, understood. I think that is all I have for now.
All right. Michael Ray?
Yeah, first, always appreciate your questions. They're really, you know, you come with such a good perspective, so I really appreciate it, Amanda. A couple of things for you. One of the things that was highlighted a few years ago and really over the course of the last year was the difference in benefits. And I'm kind of asking you a broad question when it comes to time off benefits for and parents, time off benefits for staff, you know, I think that we hired a department head and only put two weeks in a contract for them and of course, it's like, what is this? And then you have others who get five weeks or more. So, you know, just kind of big picture, it seems that, you know, part of the reason why people form unions is because they don't think their employer is listening to them and being responsive to them. You know, and it seems as if we can proactively look at the treatment across the unions and comparing it to SAP to try to equalize what that benefit package is for every employee. It doesn't matter what department they work in. So, you know, maybe it's more of a comment than a question here, which is I think it would be helpful for us to move in that direction where we have a standard benefit package that goes to all employees and not just some employees. Because, you know, as we, as we can look at the reasons why, you know, people leave town and highlighting this and highlighting that, but I mean, it's a, it's a big difference depending on what department you work in. You know. of employees, or the, you know, the twenty-two out of, I think, the thirty-eight that you identified who had moved on, you have a percentage of who went to market roles versus municipal roles, meaning, you know, non-municipal versus public kind of entities?
I may or may not.
Okay.
I mean, it's going to go off basically recollection, if I looked back at, you know, those twenty-two employees, whether they stayed within municipal or exited to private.
Yeah, so, I mean, I recognize that of all the positions that need to grow, it's probably in yours, in that, you know, you're working, you know, you have a thirty-two-hour work week, you're doing procurement, you're doing HR, you're doing all hiring, and it's just a lot, right? And then here we are, asking for even more. And it just becomes, you know, at a certain point, you can, you're going to squeeze so much.
Prioritization.
Yes. Priorit, exactly, exactly. But of course, you know, when people run for elected office, and, you know, it becomes challenging when, because of priorities, you can't get information for eight or nine months. So one of the things that would be helpful is understanding that percentage that is leaving to non-municipal services, because if our market analysis is only looking at municipal, but we're losing people to the private sector, at some point, we got to see, well, what is it in the private sector and how different are we? I get it, it's different worlds, we're not, we can't compete. But it just would be helpful to know if we're funneling people or becoming feeders for certain industries.
Sure.
And then my last two comments, and I know this has to do with bandwidth, something that I've personally done is, is I've participated in internships every, every year, and I've hired two of my interns, because no better way to, you know, feel so out than have them do an internship with you. And it seems that this is a missed opportunity for us, that interns are a lot of work, that is, you can't just say, I want an intern, and they show up and they file papers. But it would be helpful if, I know that there's work in progress, but the internship program would be helpful. And then also, you know, we have all these students in the high school that are graduating, and we all want them to do great things, but certainly, I think, you know, more can be done to inform them of what some of these municipal roles actually are. So that way, as they go into, like, I recognize in asset management, there's very few colleges that teach kids asset management. And so I started targeting like financial analysts, people who had some interest in real estate, to bring them over into kind of what I do, because that's such a critical thing. So the student initiative thing, it's a bigger thing, and I know, again, it's bandwidth, but it would be helpful if we can get to that point where maybe we're tapping into Pittsburgh State, you know, the college right down the street for some of the internship, and tapping into some of our senior's going to a career fair, because, you know, that one day to tell people what's what, you know, maybe that's the inspiration they need to get in a career path, which then provides more future applicants.
I agree. I have attended two college fairs before, so.
I know you have.
Yeah.
I know you have.
Police Department does the internship program through Pittsburgh State as well as in high school. Unfortunately, Pittsburgh State doesn't have, you know, a CPA course. They don't have people that are taking, you know, government as their, as their role. So it would be great, I think, and I think colleges that do have, you know, those, those degrees, we might open up more internship availability, but I'm not sure how we would, having been working with the internship program at Pittsburgh State, where that would be applicable for us.
So if you notice Julie and I kind of smiling at each other during this internship conversation, internships came up in another board recently, and I said, Julie, I recall when I worked previously with Attorney Terry, he, there were some rules for municipal internships, and we just emailed him on Monday to say, what are those rules? And because we do want to, you know, if we can take advantage of the summer and get a few folks in place to do some research projects or help out wherever, but I, if I recall, and this is what I wanted to see, that I believe what it was is that municipalities cannot offer unpaid internships, that we have to do it for credit. And so working that out for credit is just the one, one kind of housekeeping item that we have to make sure we can handle before.
And Pittsburgh State does do a great job with that program, you know, maybe there is opportunities there, maybe in HR, maybe there's things to pursue.
Yeah, I mean, I think the same thing with the high school, just letting them know.
It's a lot of work.
What falls under.
Having a person that manages, managed the intern program at the PD, that sometimes is, is more work than you have the bandwidth for. You have some interns that are fantastic, and then we hire them, and you have some that are not the right fit.
So I mean, in our current structure, I mean, obviously, we need more resources to be able to do this, even I, you know, as I just speak to how great I think interns are, I opted out this year because I don't have the bandwidth for them. First year I've opted out of them. But I do get it, but, you know, having that in motion is helpful, you know. It's hard, you know, we go into, talk to kids, you know, if they don't, if they don't know what the job is, they don't know to even be interested, you know? And it's just putting that bug in the air early enough to make it interesting.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Renee?
I just have one question. So we've done outside consultant previously.
We did.
We're going to do it again. What went wrong the first time? And what can we do differently to be sure we get an outcome, successful outcome this time?
The outcome of the external consultant, and I don't have the exact figures in my head, but I can say, you know, I know where I fall in the salary schedule. And when I looked at where I was and where I was going, it was like twenty bucks an hour more. So that, obviously, we were comparing to places like Foxborough, wherever the data could come from. So it's like, oh, well, you know, my position is one of them that's not common in our comparable communities. So you might get one position out of the twenty-three. So in this case, the consultant was reaching for wherever she could to get this data. I don't think we compared to Foxborough, so I don't think that was a fair assessment specifically for my position. But I can tell you, step one was our current step eight at the time. So you're dropping seven steps. So it was that, there was the job description review. That wasn't horrible, the job description piece, but as for the salary, just...
There was issues with some deliverables and timeframes as well, I believe.
So what do we do differently?
Hold on, I think, again, there's a lot of questions tonight that just don't get direct answers.
I'm trying to tip toe.
I think the answer was, what went wrong? And what you're telling me, if I can put words in your mouth from what you've just said, what went wrong is the consultant.
Yes.
So we're going to hire another consultant, so I think, I think the question is, why would it go better this time?
Because it'd be a different consultant. I mean... But I think also that understanding kind of what, having gone through the process, folks that have gone through it, what we can put forward differently on the front end of the request for proposals, and make it very clear what we're looking for in setting out those expectations on the front end, perhaps we might get a different result with the vendor.
It would seem to me as somebody who doesn't do employment, you know, and personnel recruitment, so job descriptions and that, of the like, but it seems like doing something that compares you to other towns needs a statistical analyst. You just got to look at the data and says, okay, if I want to be in the middle, what is everybody else doing? And that becomes a mathematical problem. Doesn't become a, it doesn't become a job personnel problem, because for the most part, every town has the same employees that, you know...
That's the problem, though, is that you don't.
No.
And I found that in multiple communities, because, you know, I was on the negotiating team, I was active in the personal committee, I work in Concord, and we, actually, Concord just did a conference class study a year and a half ago. The titles and the responsibilities and the amount of people doing the jobs are amazingly different in every community. It is very, very hard to find the comparables, which you wouldn't think would be that hard.
Well, but I mean, everybody has police officers fire.
Yep.
They have, you know, clerical...
But they're unions.
I understand, but you could still find out what they're doing, what they're getting.
Right.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. I mean, to see if you're paying something that's comparable to a field, you would just get those. I mean, I'm not saying there's not nuance to it, obviously, there's nuance to it, but in the broad brush, like what Julie just said, that the consultant came back with something that was like twenty dollars an hour more, like, so what are they even looking at at this point?
Unfortunately, I think that was a low bid type situation where we didn't get a good work product.
So I'm wondering, because I'm, I don't want to have no outcome, that, again, this would be three. So is there some kind of intermediate check-in that you can set up to make sure things are on track? I don't know, I mean...
I think a well-put-together class and comp plan would give you those milestones of where they're at, and I would also, like, the deliverables, which I don't recall.
I guess my suggestion is, don't wait till the very end to see, get the final product and say, well, this is garbage.
It all needs to be on the front end.
Yeah.
Yeah. It needs to be...
It needs to be in the contract, it needs to be laid out, and then it needs to be the follow-through of making sure that deliverables are being met.
And there's not a whole host of people that do this work in municipal. I can think of under ten, that, maybe even under five, that are in, practicing in this field. You know, it is, it is town by town, and you need somebody, we could probably do this ourself with unlimited time, right? Because you're reaching out and...
Wasn't that attempt two?
Right. You're reaching out and you're comparing, but we wouldn't have the time to maintain core functions of the office. But for an easy example, where does employee benefits and payroll live is, from town to town, different. Some treasure collector's office, some HR office, some finance office. It's, that really, just that one job function and who's supervising payroll and benefits can be in three different offices, and that greatly changes what, perhaps, a treasure collector that's overseeing HR and benefits is going to be compensated at a much higher rate than one that's not, typically.
And to the town manager, this is in the budget?
No, this is not, a study is not budgeted. So this is, she's presenting the plan that we need to do. I do not have funding for...
Okay, because you said FY twenty-seven.
Yeah, so this would be probably a town meeting funding request in the fall, and potentially a community compact of best practices grant application, and other, other types of ways to get this funded. I don't know, do you recall off the top of your head, Julie, around forty thousand? Is that... That's not what we paid. Okay. Ours is way less. Okay.
Maybe that's why it's in...
I don't know, I can find out.
All right. Do you want to have any other questions? No? All right. You should come to our meetings more often, Julie.
Fun.
Thank you, though. I appreciate what you're doing. I know Carter had you working very hard, so the fact that you guys had those listening sessions, you were able to implement that with warrant articles at special town meeting, I think we're moving in the right direction. We're not there yet, so, yeah, you definitely have to come back more often.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Good night.
Julie.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on. Appointments, ratifications, and resignations. So we do have the ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of Inspector of Animals, Kathy Como, eight oh six West Street, term to expire May first, twenty twenty-five, or, excuse me, term May first, twenty twenty-five to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The reason that we're doing this is because we received a form from the state that is requesting the next year's appointment. And I know that we normally have done this during our annual appointments in June, so I don't know what we've done, if that's a new form that we're getting, but we wanted...
Just specifically to, for this position?
Yes.
It's not new, this is...
Okay.
Okay.
So we would like to do this correctly, by doing the appointment and then filling out the form and sending it to the state. So that's why this is here.
Well, I say that Kathy Como's been doing this for a long time. I think she does an excellent job, and she's done so lots with her own resources and her own time, and in cases of historical fact to the detriment of family members' health, who I hope is doing fine, but I would wholeheartedly support her ratification.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'd motion.
I didn't know if anybody else wanted to say anything. I'll make that a motion to ratify the Town Manager's appointment of the Inspector of Animals, Kathy Como.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion?
Yes.
I had a question, just to the Town Manager, the nominating authority on this form, you will change, yes?
Yep, so I already have the handwriting and changing the name to Heather, from Heather to me.
Oh, yes.
I just want to second all of Mr. Alonso's comments about Kathy, her contribution to the community, you know, her family's contribution to the community. I think Kathy represents, you know, some of the best among us, and I'm really grateful that she's willing to continue in this service.
I agree. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We will send that off to the state probably tomorrow, because the deadline was, I think it was like today or something, but...
We'll send it tomorrow, because the deadline was today. That sounds perfect.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, at least we're responding and doing this right in the correct order this year. All right. Moving on, oh, Town Manager report.
Okay. All right. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first update through you to the public is that last Friday, the governor signed the legislation to extend remote meeting participation that was set to expire yesterday, and so now the new extension runs through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. And we'll probably be facing this about a month beforehand, before June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Okay, local receipts. So with the complete, now that we have completed March, we're three-quarters through the fiscal year. Today, the Finance Director ran our local receipts report, and we have collected two million, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. The projected figure, so the target that we are aiming for is three million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. There's a difference of a little over one-point-three million or sixty, or sixty percent collected. This is similar to the trend last year at this time in March, where it was sixty-point-nine cents. I had here that the Finance Director is conducting further analysis on receipts, but basically on, in looking at the unreconciled receipts for motor vehicle excise, we are right on target. So I have no concerns at this time, but if there are any concerns or irregularities with receipts, I will bring those forward. The town has been notified that UMass Memorial Health has submitted an application for a satellite emergency facility to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. This is to address the closure of Nishoba, obviously. The proposed site is in Groton, and it is to provide region, the region with access to emergency physicians, clinicians, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, in addition to qualified emergency staff. They would also provide radiology, imaging, and laboratory services, and have ambulance base to accept patients brought by ambulance. So I'm not sure if the board would like to consider supporting, sending a letter of supportive future meeting, but I just wanted to let folks know that something is happening, although I don't, I don't think that this is going to be a quick resolution. Okay. Last Monday, I attended the Joint Committee on Ways and Means FY twenty-six budget hearing focusing on local aid at UMass Amherst. Also in attendance were the superintendent and several members of the school committee. The hearing was standing room only, with hundreds of people gathered outside. Following the hearing, I did speak with Representative Scarsdale, and I reiterated one of the, one of the pieces of testimony that was given by the Executive Director of the Mass Municipal Association, which was, as soon as the legislature can arrive at a consensus figure around unrestricted government aid or UGA and Chapter Seventy, the better. There's obviously a lot that the legislature will need to work out with the budget process, but if they can arrive at those figures before town meeting season, it may greatly impact town meetings, including ours. Also, following up, with the state budget season underway, Representative Scarsdale has reached out to obtain requests for local earmarks. She provided a funding target of approximately, she was looking for projects under the fifty-thousand-dollar range. So I provided her four potential earmarks from the FY twenty-six capital plan that fell within that target. So it was the security system upgrades for the public schools, management and eradication of invasive weeds at Marshall Pond, design and engineering for the Lunenburg Primary School, and interior improvements at the Adult Activity Center. And so she has decided to move forward with the request for security system upgrades, which is the servers for the security camera systems at the school department as the earmark request for Lunenburg this year. I, I understand that the Chair of the Cemetery Commission has also been in touch with Representative Kishmarik's office and has renewed a prior request for thirty-eight thousand dollars to fund monument restoration for both South and North Cemeteries. So I haven't heard from, Senate's usually in a couple of weeks after, I haven't heard from Senator Cronin's office, but I anticipate that I'll be hearing a similar request from him. Uh, I, I understand that the chair of um, the Cemetery Commission has also been in touch with Representative Kishmarik's office and has renewed a prior request for thirty eight thousand dollars to fund monument restoration for both South and North Cemeteries. So I haven't heard from Senate's usually in a couple of weeks after, I haven't heard from Senator Cronin's office, but I anticipate that um, I'll be hearing a similar request from him. My strategy tends to be that I don't want two different projects um, living one in the House budget, one in the Senate budget, and then have neither come out of conference committee. So I tend to just ask the Senate um, to support if something prevails in the House budget, to support that request. Otherwise, if the House budget is not supported, then submit a new request on the Senate side, but um.
Mr. Chairman, ask a question or comment. So, thank you first, um, I think that it's, you know, every year typically, the select board provides to the state delegation a list of priorities for earmarks. Uh, I think that that is a very important tradition uh, for this board to be able to receive those requests from, you know, the school committee, from other areas in town. And then speak in a unified voice to our elected officials, our state delegation for what we'd like to see. So, you know, while I don't disagree uh, with anything that you've put forward, I do think uh, in the future that the tradition we have here, um, it would be, um, that we should maintain that.
And, and just to respond to that, I totally hear that, you're going to need to do that in January because you get a call from the legislative delegation and you have less than twenty four hours to give a response.
We usually do do it in January.
Okay, okay, excellent, so just as long as we get that on the calendar, because when that call comes, that, it's usually they're scheduled a, a, a meeting with Ways and Means Chair and, and they don't, we can't convene a meeting, right?
Understood, yep.
All right, um, the Finance Committee public hearing is uh, this Thursday, April third, at seven PM. And lastly is uh, MRPC, Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, has applied to the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness MVP Grant Program to fund a project that will survey small local farmers to understand the impact of climate change on their operations. And allow for an examination of zoning and general bylaws to evaluate potential changes that would support regional agriculture. The Local Agricultural Commission and I uh, signed on to a letter in support of MRPC's application. So if they receive that grant funding, I will report back. Okay, project updates, um, the first update is on the Flat Hill Bridge Project. I'm sure folks have seen some activity starting over there and the road was shut down and now have seen uh, equipment being pulled out. So Kenefec Corporation, uh, who is our contractor, closed the roadway on Friday, March seventh, twenty twenty five. However, the level of the lake had risen by three plus feet. Kenefec's water control plan was likely inadequate for this level of water and therefore no work had been done. They did submit a request to the DPW request, director requesting an additional year um, extension citing their inability to control the water at this time. The DPW director has responded this week to that request, formally denying the extension. Legal counsel has been advised of the situation and is working with the town on the next steps. Kenefec has now moved most of their equipment from the site. Uh, the DPW director did ask Mastot to come out and inspect the bridge before reopening it to vehicular traffic. They were out today and they did not see any large changes um, since their last inspection three months ago. However, um, their underwater bridge inspection team will be coming out this week to inspect before opening it up to traffic. Uh, next week, I'm sorry. The inspector also thought it may be a good idea to impose a weight posting on the bridge. The thought is that a six ton limit would be good as school buses would be able to cross, um, but big trucks would not. So um, we have to resolve the contractual issue um, before we can move forward with this project. Uh, I, I did have an update on the um, the cleaning contract that now is under contract about three hours ago. So um, we had a little bit of difficulty with our low bidder, our parent low bidder, getting all the information that we needed for the cleaning of municipal buildings. But it seems as though everything is in order now and I did execute that contract. So I'm not going to read the rest of my update on that item then. Uh, we are putting out an IFB tomorrow for roadway maintenance, fog seal and crack seal. The due date will be April twenty third with an anticipated start date of June second. The total anticipated cost is two hundred and thirty three thousand dollars and it is nine point five two miles of fog seal and six point nine nine miles of crack seal. Town hall roof replacement is nearly complete and the project is proceeding as expected. Uh, work is ongoing with the Adult Activity Center kitchen renovation, the sub slab cast iron pipe has been repaired with epoxy. And the plumbing work has now been inspected and the next step will be to pour the concrete. And landscapers, contractors have begun spring cleanups, the softball field and power field at Marshall Park have been completed. Vacancies, we have executive assistant to the town manager and select board at thirty six hours per week. We have an offer pending of, for the sewer, part-time sewer business manager position. We're still waiting on lifeguard and beach directors, uh, cemetery seasonal labors, the two individuals from last season, it appears are returning and so that is great. The administrative assistant ten hour a week position in conservation, there's an offer pending. And the library page position that had been posted has now been filled. And current vacancies, uh, I'll just read these quick, Agricultural Commission one, APDC one, Board of Health one, Cultural Council one, Green Communities two, their associates, Historical Commission two, Personnel Committee five, PAC one, Sewer one, Stormwater one, ZBA one. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Jen, any other questions for the town manager?
I have a couple of questions, specific, and maybe you can't answer this, um, Flat Hill with the bridge. It's, the water has risen three feet in what timeframe?
So when they, when they first started putting their equipment out, it was before the thaw and it was about a week. So as, as everything.
And they didn't plan for this?
It does not appear that their water control um, plan was adequate for the, that level of potential changing conditions.
I have to claim ignorance on how the Shirley Dam functions in comparison to the Hickory Hills Dam function, because I am more familiar with Hickory Hills. But can we not control the, the level of the lake with the Shirley Dam as we can with Hickory Hills?
I don't believe so.
Okay, those are just questions. And then uh, fog seal, crack seal, and I know in previous years we bid that separately and we have also bid it with in the paving contract, is that not included in our current paving contract?
Oh, I, I would have to check on that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jen. Moving on to old business, discussion and potential votes to recommend approval on annual town meeting articles. So we are going to follow the same process as last time. One thing to note here, there are a few uh, moving pieces still, uh, which we'll talk about when we go through them. So it looks like that we will have to send the booklet to the printer next Wednesday instead of uh, next Monday. And that's also because of the election warrant as well. I know the ballot questions for Marshall Park, for example, are still being reviewed by town council, um, so just as an FYI. And Jen did speak to the printer and they're aware of that and we don't really anticipate any issues with that, so as an FYI. All right, so let's start, we'll just go through all of them. So Article one, authorization to hear and or accept the reports of officers and committees of the town, we voted to recommend approval. Article two, authorization to borrow and anticipation of revenue and to enter into a compensating balance agreement with the bank, we recommended approval. Oh, double sided. Article three, authorization to expend funds in anticipation of reimbursements of state highway assistance aid, we voted to recommend approval. Article four, revolving funds, I don't believe we voted to recommend approval on this one, where's the vote? We did not. All right, but we did add it to the warrant, right, which is why it's green here, okay. All right, I'll, I'll ask, is there a motion to recommend approval?
Move to recommend approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passes unanimously. All right, Article five, authorization to pay expenses from a prior fiscal year, we did not recommend approval, there are no known prior fiscal year expenses. It hasn't changed at all, doesn't look like it has.
Nope.
No, okay.
I think officially, Mr. Chair, um, we may want to defer.
Right.
So I move to defer recommendation Article five.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously, we have deferred. Article six, fiscal year twenty twenty five, budget adjustments, none here as well, so this probably will be deferred as well. Is there a motion to defer?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, move to defer Article six.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. Article seven, fiscal year twenty twenty five, closeouts, Jen, go ahead.
So the, this used to have the CARES Act grant for the thirty six thousand and change. The finance director has want, has requested that we maybe deal with that in the fall. He wants to do a little bit more work and see if that really is the full amount, if, if we need to clear that full amount or if it could possibly be less. So it is a smaller article than originally presented. I do want to make the note here that in the summary, um, I have that uh, the amount printed in the warrant article are best estimates at the time of printing and may be altered under the motion at town meeting. The school department may be looking to absorb some of the fifty thousand within their budget if they can. And I think that the snow and ice, it might be a little shy of the four fifteen, so I just wanted to note that publicly.
Okay.
Defer?
Yeah, is there a motion to defer?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, move to defer Article seven.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passes unanimously.
Sorry, I'm delayed tonight.
That's okay, that's fine. Article eight, fiscal year twenty twenty six, capital program. Do you want to just speak to some of the comments here?
Yeah, so um, there's a comment from council here, um, that, that this is somewhat different than what has been done in the past, um, for two reasons. One is that um, there was language in the kind of precursor to the chart that said, as generally illustrated below. Based on town council's comments, I've taken out the, that phrase generally illustrated below. But more so that the typical way, I believe that um, capital plan is referenced within the warrant article is by saying as included in the capital planning committee's report to town meeting. And so I, I believe that that's what he is getting to here by listing the full grid in the warrant and not referring to the capital planning committee's report to town meeting. As I understand, the capital planning committee is not planning on providing a written report to town meeting in the book, so.
All right, and nothing has changed?
Nothing has changed with this.
So just the inclusion of the table that, that he's objecting to?
Yeah.
He's not objecting to, he's just stating that it's different.
Okay.
But it's different because we used to be able to point to something that we're not going to be able to point to this year.
And I think he was just also saying that, that capital planning in general has had some level of controversy for a variety of reasons.
So the table hasn't changed, but in, the planned funding sources have from the last version that we got, uh, dated March eighteenth.
The amounts of the certified free cash.
Yeah, and the reason appropriate.
So those were, the RNA was changed, the reason appropriate was changed to offset the restoration of the pavement management plan. This was one of the spots that.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure that was.
Yep, intentional.
Yes.
I would move that we recommend approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. All right, Article nine, Lunenberg Middle High School Track and Field Complex. So I never watched that capital planning meeting, Tom, was this discussed during that meeting at all?
Well, I was only at a half an hour of that meeting and it was discussed, yes.
Yes, it, so it was discussed, um, the, the chair um, stated how the thought at the time was essentially that this could perhaps be funded with free cash, um, but that perhaps all things considered, maybe the school committee wouldn't be moving forward with this. I think at this point, this article is not funded and there is no, this is north of a hundred thousand dollar article. My recommendation to the select board would not include this article on the town meeting warrant.
So, and I, and I don't disagree, I, I will say I did watch the meeting after, you know, on, on, you know, the recording the next day. And it was indicated that, because I, I couldn't remember if we voted on it or not. And it turned out that it was pulled by the school department midway through the capital planning process, that they pulled it. So we never ranked it.
Okay.
And therefore my, and, and there was discussion, my initial position was that, because it wasn't ranked by the capital planning commission, I mean, this, we shouldn't take a position on a specific article that goes outside of our scope, that was not universally agreed to, I mean, there were some people who agreed with that, some people who didn't. But in total, we didn't take any vote that said we supported or didn't support it. It was just the discussion and it was left at that.
Right, all right, so do we want to pull it out of the, the warrant then?
Yes, I would.
Yes.
All right, is there a motion then?
I'd move that we remove the.
Really?
I'd move that we remove the Article nine Lunenberg Middle High School Track and Field Complex from the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passes unanimously. All right, Article ten, authorization to fund special projects.
Again, Mr. Chairman, there has been a change here from um, what you saw last time. So uh, it's largely the same except for item B, um, which uh, was a cemetery road network repair. At my presentation last Thursday to the Finance Committee, there was um, substantial discussion on uh, the grant writer position or grant writer services being removed. And there was a suggestion made that um, that perhaps the, the road network repair within the cemetery um, be replaced with the grant writer services. Um, I have since had discussions with the DPW director as well as the chair of the Cemetery Commission, um, stating that it was going to be my intent to swap out this. In, in hearing the arguments for and against, uh, it, it did weigh that the grant writing services, let's try the pilot program with uh, one-time funds. And see if it works, let's see, let's see if we, if we really launch a pilot program, what's the ROI? And that, um, further that the, the road request that was submitted to the capital planning committee for the cemetery was not the same exact request as the repair. So, so that hadn't fully been considered by the capital planning committee because it was actually a different project, same, same area, same roads, but different project.
Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Just want to point out to the town manager that those three items don't total that total from my math. It's a hundred and fifty two thousand, it looks like.
Oh.
And five hundred.
Good catch.
Yes, you.
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
Good catch.
Thank you.
And I have that we voted on this last time.
Voted to include it.
We voted to include it.
And I have, I, my notes are approval.
It says right here, we voted to approve it too.
Okay, well, sure.
So.
But we should probably revote it with the new number.
Yeah.
Sure.
And with the new item B.
The new item, yeah.
So I would move that we re-recommend approval for Article ten.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no, motion passes unanimously and it has been re-recommended. All right, Article eleven, fiscal year twenty twenty six, omnibus budget. We did vote to include this one, we did not vote to recommend it. So, all right, are you, you're going to fill in numbers here?
Yeah, in the, in the summary?
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
What else is there to do here?
Nothing.
Uh, yeah.
The budget has not changed since last presented to the board.
Okay, are we willing to vote to recommend approval on this tonight?
Well, I would find it, I would just offer a commentary that I would find it hard to imagine at this point a scenario where the Board of Selectmen wouldn't approve the town manager's budget after we've been talking about it for weeks. That would be, seem an odd thing to do, so yes, I would be willing to vote on it.
There won't be any, you don't anticipate any more changes?
Oh, there'll probably be changes.
So, I mean, that's the only thing, do we wait to just catch the changes or do we?
I don't anticipate any changes between now and next meeting. Um, I think if there were to be any changes, it would be closer to town meeting. So, you, it, it would have to take something that is not foreseen at this time to make that change.
Right. I mean, I am willing to recommend approval on it tonight.
Yep.
As am I.
All right, is there a motion?
I would move that we recommend approval of Article eleven.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. Article twelve, citizens petition, and this is the override petition.
There is a reference from council saying same comment as above. I've, I've reordered, I've reordered these and put the citizens petition for the budget right under the omnibus budget. So the comment, let me just read the comment to the board on.
I'm assuming it's AC nine somewhere.
It is um, on Article thirty three, note that I've made no adjustments to or recommendations concerning the article, which must be printed in the exact form received from the citizen petitioners.
Where?
That's on Article thirty three on the Cemetery Corporation, um, citizens petition, all the way towards the end. So when he says same as above, he was referring to that comment about um, the cemetery.
So is this the final order, do you know?
Well, that, the board would set the final order.
Okay, okay, because it's, okay, it's different than last week.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get there. All right, so basically you're saying that we cannot modify the language of a petitioned article?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so where are we at on this, do we?
Article, so this citizens petition, just to state it, this is the override.
This is the override, yep.
And then Article thirteen is essentially.
And then Article 13 is essentially an override placeholder coming from the select board.
That's correct.
Nope.
Oh, wait, let me supplemental, no, no, it's not, this is the free cash.
Got it, got it.
The, the override placeholder, I'm not moving forward with an override placeholder.
Yeah.
It's been removed.
Yeah, we'll get there when we get there.
No, it's not here, it's, I've removed it.
Oh, I see, okay, all right. So, do we want to defer? Do we want to take a vote?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, coming up on the agenda is discussion potential vote to include proposition two and a half ballot.
Yes.
Override question.
Both of those?
No, I mean, I don't think so. Um, but I mean, just to be clear, so, the only, um, the only pa- uh, warrant and how we're proposing, the only article for an override would be the article submitted by the citizens' petition.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if members want to wait. School committee's meeting tomorrow, and a number of comments came out at the last finance committee meeting.
Yeah.
And I believe they're going to be addressed, um, by the school committee tomorrow. I don't know if members want to wait.
What, from, from the presentation? Are you talking about at this finance committee?
Last finance committee, the questions around the line budget versus the supporting material.
They were budget questions, not necessarily-
Yeah, but, I mean, if it changes the bottom line, does it change the override amount?
Well, the citizens' petition does it.
Can't be changed.
It can't be changed.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's the number.
The citizens' petition.
Well, if the gap is smaller than the citizens' petition, does that change your mind? You, you see what I'm saying?
But they can't submit every number.
You can't change it, but does it change how you would vote for it?
Actually, actually, if it's brought up on town meeting floor-
On the floor, it could be.
It could be amended.
It can be amended, yeah. It can only be amended lower, by the way, so.
It's, um, it's the election ballot.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So therefore, yeah, if there was to be a ballot question, that would, that would lock it in, yeah.
Right. So, I mean, we still have next week. It's not going to the printer until Wednesday. Would we prefer to vote on it next week?
I think I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready to vote on it. I mean, I, I'll, I'll say my little statement that I prepared-
Sure.
It's probably not going to be well-liked. Um, I want to start by saying this cl- or, saying this clearly, I support our schools, um, not just in words, but personally. I have two, I have one child that already graduated from Lunenburg Schools, I graduated from Lunenburg. I have two currently in the district. Um, I definitely understand what's at stake. But I also have a responsibility as a member of this board to look at the needs of the entire town and to make sure any override we bring forward is a balanced, sustainable, and ready. I'll be voting no on placing the citizens' petition on the ballot. Not because the schools don't need support, but because this proposal only addresses one piece of a much larger problem. We're in a year of major transition, a new town manager, new members of the schools, schools and towns' finance teams, a new superintendent coming in after the school year, and new members on both the school committee and this board. This is the first full budget cycle for many of our key leaders, and there are still unresolved questions in the budget, identified by the finance committee. This isn't about delaying for the sake of it, it's about doing what's right. We need more time to build a comprehensive plan that reflects the needs of both our schools and our municipal departments. I know this decision won't be popular with everyone, but it's the one I feel is most responsible. When we go to the voters with an override, we owe them a clear, complete, and credible proposal, not a piece, no one.
I had a lot to say as well. I planned it for, you know, the next agenda item, not right now. I'm going to save it, though. Um, I think bottom line for me, it's kind of hard to vote to recommend a school-only override when the school committee themselves, we all got in this room together, and none of them recommended it this year. So, for me, like, I cannot recommend the override, putting on the ballot's different, in my opinion. It's just hard for me to recommend it when the elected body that's in charge of the school budget could not actually say, "Yes, we want an override, that's what we're recommending." We had a joint meeting with them. The feedback was pretty unanimous. None of them said that they wanted an override. So, that's where it's at for me, at least.
For me, as I've said on previous meetings, and I, you know, a lot of my sentiments were stated by, uh, by Ms. Moore, and I concur with m- m- most, if not all of them. I would add to that, that, you know, the leadership positions that the school committee and this board are charged with, especially in something as serious as, you know, a million dollars last year, or just shy of a million dollars last year, and two million dollars this year, is proper planning. And without a plan, and without a, A, without a, a town-wide plan, and without a multi-year plan, so we can, when people ask, as they did at last town meeting, last annual town meeting, when they asked, "Will this cover next year?" And there was like, "Well, we don't know." But now people say, "Well, we said, we, we, we knew we'd be back," when they didn't say that, they said, "They don't know." We need to know. If we're going to ask people to have this, we need to have a plan. And I will not support one at this point. I, I did it last year because it was said, just like we're talking about using free cash this year, it's a bad practice. Doing what we did without a plan last year was a bad practice, but it was an emergency situation, and we said, "Okay, this tides us over, but I can't do another, this tides us over." Now we're just getting into bad practice. And therefore, without a plan, I cannot vote in good conscience to put it on the ballot. So I concur with, with Ms. Moore. I'm with you, Mr. Chair.
Renee?
I have nothing more to add.
Yeah.
A lot of the same, I mean, we discussed this, um, whenever we met down there.
Two weeks ago.
Was that two weeks ago?
It was, yep.
Um, uh, yeah, so I have nothing more to add.
All right, Michael Ray?
I don't have anything to add.
All right, well, is there a motion then?
Well, about what? About the petition or, because it sounds like we talked about the ballot, too. We could do, unless you want to wait to let agenda item-
Well, we can talk. If we're going to talk about the ballot, they can call it.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, you know, I've, I've wavered on this one. So, you know, my general opinion is I really hoped that this, um, being on in front of the town would trigger, um, some people to, um, reevaluate it. Um, you know, I, I hoped that the school committee, um, even this board, um, would be supportive and understanding, you know, the impact of a two million dollar cut, which I think I'm hearing is over twenty teachers. And, you know, understanding that impact to the families and the residents. Um, I will say that the emails that I've received over the last, uh, week and a half have been more dissuasive than persuasive. Um, you know, it, I, I really think that after, in, um, after six years almost of being here, I really would have hoped that we would have, um, people volunteering to be part of the solution and not just finger-pointing and, and, and blaming. You know, we have a lot of vacancies, we have a personnel committee, we haven't been able to fill in over a year, and, and I'm frustrated, um, that our concerned citizens can't, uh, volunteer, um, to help out. And so, you know, I definitely support this, um, being in front of the voters, however, you know, I mean, there's two parts to this, which is the ballot.
Right.
And that's where I probably struggle the most, um, because, you know, just because a citizens' petition comes forward, if it triggers a ballot, it doesn't, you know, I have the consistent opinion that anything that comes before this board, that we have the ability to decide if it makes it or doesn't make it, we have discretion and we're supposed to exercise it. I know that some colleagues in the past, not current colleagues, but past colleagues, have disagreed and, and felt strongly that everything should get in front of the voters, but, you know, I'm not- Two weeks ago, I was ready to vote to put this on the ballot, and, uh, you know, I've changed my mind. So I, I no longer support this being in front of the ballot. Therefore, um, I cannot recommend approval of the petition.
If I can piggyback on that, that last comment, because I know there's been a lot of, you know, you're taking away our voice, just let the voters decide. And I just wanted to add, um, piggybacking what you said just, Michael Ray, was, um, putting something on the ballot that hasn't been fully vetted or coordinated, in my opinion, sets a dangerous precedent. Our job here is to ensure what we put forward is complete and responsible, not necessarily just what's popular.
Yeah, I think I've struggled with how much, you know, I've struggled with the rationale in trying to understand why the school committee last year couldn't weather a million dollars, but this year can weather a two million dollar cut. But, you know, when you're kind of digging into the numbers, you know, the school department budget has, I think the last thing I saw is that it's increased by about thirteen percent over the last two years or so. Um, you know, and we're not, thirteen percent, and we're still not out of this, and we're not even close to it. And I think the real concern for me, and, and this is why I was more inclined to support it this year, is I think that a, a two million dollar override has a better chance of passing than a four million dollar override, in my opinion. Um, you know, but, you know, I think asking the voters to add a two hundred, four hundred bucks to their tax bill is a very different conversation than asking voters to add eight hundred, a thousand, twelve hundred bucks to their tax bill. I think that's almost a guaranteed no. Um, but, you know, I don't, I'm not a, you know, I don't know the future. Uh, I think next year will be challenging to get a significant, if, if we have to add two million plus the impact, um, it's going to be challenging to get a, a five million dollar override through, and, and I will be voting no on that. Um, so I would much prefer that we have an option for a much lower dollar amount, uh, so that way something can, so that way the situation isn't so bad. But, again, I'm not on the school committee, and the school committee is unanimous, so.
And that's where I'm at as well. I have serious concerns about what's going to happen if next year we end up presenting a multi-year override. I mean, I don't even know what that number is going to be. But my fear is that voters will look at that and immediately say, "No, that is way too much money." And then we'll be in an even bigger hole than we're in now. So, that's where I was at, too. If this made it on the ballot and it was on the warrant, personally, as a resident, I would have voted for it. I think recommending to approve in this role is a little different, especially when you have a elected committee not recommending it to you, which is harder to do. But it is a real concern of mine. Because next year, if that's what happens, and the way things are going now, then we're going to be looking at serious cuts. So, I also looked at it as two million dollars, maybe it's a little more realistic to pass, and it's better than nothing. But I also understand that we would probably be in the same situation next year. So maybe this multi-year approach is the way to go. I don't know, I don't have the answers to that, so.
One of the differences next year, I think, is that there will be, you will know exactly what you're getting. There will be a, a plan laid out. It will be had, be vetted, there will be a runway to educate the public. There are people who saw a joint meeting, it was like, "No override this year, all right, I'm done. I don't have to pay attention, I'm not even going to go to town meeting." They have no idea what we're talking about right now.
That piece was, is important to me, because that's, that is, you know, I know that there was a, an, an override that passed in someplace south of here, just a couple, last week or the week before. And the article stated that they had, you know, many public hearings, and people were prepared, people could organize. We don't have a plan for what this looks like. All this looks like is that we need to raise money. We don't know where it's going for past this year. It's just, we know we're going for it this year. And then we have to scramble to make sure how we're going to use this. I mean, this is just, again, this is not the way to do it. And, and people would not be fully alerted to it with enough time to ge- to hear, engage, ask questions up until the time of the, like, it's six weeks, it's just absolutely not enough time.
And we had the fire union before us saying, you know, as much as they are hurting now, they need that fourth shift, they are willing to forego another year to have a more, you know, expand, a town-wide override next year.
Right, and there are those needs on the town side, too.
Oh, absolutely.
We don't have any departments that are bleeding the way the school budget is.
I don't agree with that statement.
Yeah. They definitely need consideration as well, which is what I'm getting at.
Sorry, Senator.
It's okay.
I mean, I think, you know, we're going to have an omnibus budget in front of the town for forty-something million dollars, and people are only going to have three, four weeks to decide on it.
Right.
I mean, I, I, you know, I don't want to be, I, I don't want to be confrontational, I just want to offer this opinion. And I, I think that the format that we go through with articles, I think it is reasonable time for voters to be informed. Uh, I do think that it's enough time for voters to make an informed decision on the override. But I recognize that if you want an override to pass, that the most successful pathway is by having as much runway as possible. Um, and the, the longer the runway, the better the education can be, the better that you can help get it to pass. But whether or not, I think it's enough time for people to make a decision. I mean, I, I do think it is. You know, we're obviously, you know, this bleeds into what's going to happen next year. You know, whether or not we are thought this, you know, the board after I'm off is thoughtful and spends a lot of time, I think, you know, I honestly would say that I don't think most people frankly care about the level of detail. What they care about is the impact to them. And if, if any board, you know, goes to the voters and said, "We need a thousand dollars, eight hundred bucks," anything close to that, I think it is a guaranteed no. Uh, unless you have a, you know, the sky is falling and here's how we're not going to, you know, how we're going to avoid this parade of horribles. But, you know, something that makes me, just, I don't want to take too much time, a, a key point here is I was talking to a friend of mine who lives in town, you know, a senior, uh, friend of mine, who bought their house for like twenty-six thousand dollars. And, you know, recently, a good friend of mine was in from Wisconsin, and I asked his parents, you know, how much they paid for their house, you know, forty years ago when they bought it, and it was about a hundred grand. You know, and, and other, some of my other friends that live in Lunenburg. So, the point is, you know, there are many people who live in town that bought a house for eighty, ninety, a hundred thou- thousand dollars. And when they retired in, you know, two thousand, they didn't have the salaries of today. They retired on a sixty thousand, fifty-five thousand dollars a year. You know, the people who are buying homes in, in the last three years in Lunenburg, you're buying in at four hundred thousand plus, and most people are buying in at six hundred thousand dollars. So it's just, it's a, it's a different conversation when it's about affordability for the entire town, because we can't just look at, you know, the people who have bought a six hundred thousand dollar house. We have to think about all the people who bought a hundred thousand dollar house and that are paying taxes, and can they afford a thousand, eight hundred, even a four hundred, because we're only talking four hundred bucks? Can they, can they stomach, can they weather a four hundred dollar increase? And literally get nothing personally out of it, other than the assurance that their property value is going to go up, which they frankly don't care about, because they're not selling anyway. Um, so, i- i- it, that's where I probably struggle the most, is recognizing across the board impact. Uh, I wish we had the ability to have a voluntary, who wants to contribute, you know, uh, well, people always can voluntarily contribute their tax dollars. Uh, but I, I do wish we had a way to more targeted, get a targeted way to kind of raise these funds. And I, I support the parents, but I also can't not think about the thirty percent of our town that's retired.
All right, I think we've all set our piece here. Is there a motion to recommend approval?
Motion to recommend disapproval on Article-
We can do it.
On Article 12. Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously, and then we'll flip that for the booklet. All right, Article 13, Supplement to the Lunenburg Public Schools Fiscal Year 2026 Operating Budget. So this is the transfer of five hundred thousand from certified free cash to the schools. I think we've discussed this, nothing much has changed about this, right?
The only thing that's changed on this is that council, instead of adding it in the motion, um, put the contingency language right in the main body of the article, um, so that it is can, said transfer, uh, to occur only if voters fail to approve a proposition two and a half override. It goes on. So, so it makes it very clear that this is, if override passes, this transfer doesn't go forward, right in the article as opposed to the motion.
Okay. All right, well, is there a motion to add this to the warrant?
I, I have a question on this. So, in, I mean, anticipating that our next vote is going to be not to, um, include an override on a ballot, um, there's not a path ahead.
Right.
There is.
There is.
Well, which would be after the, after the election, after the organization of a new board, if this passes at town meeting, then there could be a conversation about, do we revisit this?
We could call a special town meeting.
Special town meeting.
Yep.
For special election.
Special election.
Oh, that's what I meant.
If they wanted, if, for some reason, the override passes at town meeting, and we wanted to then allow-
The new board could vote to put it on the ballot at a special-
So, leaving this language in still, still protects us in that situation.
There's still the possibility, so it's why we were-
Someone on the floor of town meeting can just remove that requirement.
They could.
Sure.
And we could vote it down.
And then, and then I think the motion would change, right? The, the position would change. If that requi- if that contingency was to be removed at town meeting, I think that that would greatly change the debate on town meeting floor at that time.
Got it.
Yeah.
So as writ, I, I would move that we included in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
I would move that we recommend approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Article 14, amendments to the Salary Administrative Plan, SAP, Position Titles and Grades. So it looks like we did vote to include it. This is green. I know the rest of it's red because of the comment.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more with the town council's comment, which in the comment is shorter than the two pages of the article, most of which is already not changing anything. So I think we should word it.
I agree.
Yeah, that's, okay. It's probably easier to read.
I'd like to see that data that I requested earlier before I made a motion, or before I recommended approval on it. We did already include it. Did we already recommend approval?
We added it to the warrant. We didn't vote to recommend approval.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair. I think, I hear you. However, I think my opinion is that when it comes to SAP and improving pay for staff or positions, it's, I think that it's really advantageous for the board to not defer to town meeting.
Oh, I don't want to defer.
To next week. We have next week.
I would just like to make sure that, you know, we had the presentation, but I, we don't have the data behind it.
Yeah.
Which one? Okay, you're talking about the classifications?
14.
Yeah, because we talked about the DPD.
All right, so next week?
Yeah, so we can hold off on this for next week. That's fine.
I agree, though, that we should have a recommendation.
Oh, yeah. I do as well.
Is that seem going to apply to 15?
Yes.
One more thing. One more thing, yep.
Yep, one more week.
All right.
That's just my personal opinion.
Yep, so we add it to the warrant and then we'll hold off on voting to recommend until next week. Article 16, holiday pay for call firefighters, we recommend approval. 17, appropriate free cash to the stabilization fund, we did not vote on this one.
We don't have a dollar.
Do we know the number yet?
There is no dollar. This is one is no dollar amount. So there's no transfer to any of the stabilization accounts. So could, could I remove both of these like in advance of today? Sure. But my thought here is that to keep these on the warrant with the explanation of what they are.
Yes.
And as well, that due to, so the second, due to the planned transfer of free cash to the Lunenburg Public Schools for FY '26 under Article whatever, the planned motion is to pass over this article at annual town meeting. I want to make it abundantly clear where that free cash came from and what we are foregoing this year in order to transfer to the schools. So that's my recommendation of why this stays on the warrant, but the motion would be to pass over the article at town meeting.
So for tonight, the recommendation, Mr. Chair, would this be no action or?
Yeah, well, I mean, it does make sense to defer it.
No direct financial, no, well, that's in common.
What do we do in cases like this? What have we done?
I've only seen this.
We've never done this, but I agree with the town manager's reason for doing it.
Okay.
But I didn't think, I didn't think we, I mean, I knew the stabilization fund we were zeroing out. I didn't think the special purposes visually, we zeroed out that one, too?
Those two, and we kept OPEB.
OPEB, 222,000.
212,000.
12,000, oh.
So what is our official stance here?
I, that's a good question.
Well, the question is, what are we going to do when we come up with it? Are we going to pass this over?
Why don't we defer?
The motion is to pass over.
Motion would be to pass over. And so it would probably be handled within the consent agenda, I would think.
And I wouldn't make the point.
But, okay, fair.
Do we vote for anything here to fill in? I mean, is there a recommendation that we can make on this?
I think I understand where the town manager's coming from.
Yeah.
We're literally putting.
Do these summaries go into the booklet?
Correct.
Well, then it should be part of the summary that there's no recommendation because we're not, there's no financial impact. We shouldn't have, we, there's no need to take a vote on anything.
Right, that's what I was.
I think it should be part of the summary of why there's no recommendation.
No recommendation.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Well, explain in the summary, because there's no financial impact, there was no select board recommendation.
Yeah. All right. All right.
I guess I would argue that there's no financial impact, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying that there is.
I don't want to, I don't want to take over the financial, the finance committee's wording.
Terminology for votes.
No, I was saying, I think that by not doing this, there is a financial impact.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that there's no financial impact to this motion.
Yeah, I see what you're getting at, yeah.
I think there, there is where we already have clearly stated, this is not best practice. This is a financial article.
Right, so we don't say there's no financial impact.
I don't think we should say that because there is.
Do we defer and then pass over town meeting?
Or are recommendations to take no action?
Yeah, I, I think no recommendation is good.
Take no.
I just, I wouldn't support saying no financial impact.
All right. Is there a motion to recommend that town meeting take no action on this article?
Yeah, I moved.
It's a new one that we've never used, but sure, why not?
I move for Article 17, for the select board to recommend taking no action on Article 17 and 18.
Do you want to just? Okay, thank you.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, so that brings us to 19, appropriate free cash to the OPEB trust fund, we recommend approval.
You were right on the 222, not 21.
Yeah, I know. I was going to say, I knew I was right.
Your memory was serving you better.
Yeah, that's all right. Article 20, establish a reserve fund for future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences. Yes, we recommend approval. Article 21, appropriation to the compensated absence reserve fund. Oh, we did not vote on this one, but we voted on the other one. Okay. So we have the number, it's 10,000. Go ahead. Are you going to make a motion?
Yep, I move to recommend approval of Article 21.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Article 22, transfer funds to the OPEB sewer trust fund, we voted to recommend approval. 23, FY '26 sewer enterprise voted to recommend approval. 24, sewer inflow infiltration stabilization fund voted to recommend approval. 25, sewer reserve capacity stabilization fund voted to recommend approval. Article 26, solid waste disposal program enterprise fund, we did not vote on this one.
We don't have a dollar.
You do, you do now, 500,000.
500,000.
It's in the summary.
Yep, the planned, are we going to move that into the, into the language here then?
It doesn't go in the actual, yeah.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
I would move, I would recommend we, I move that the select board recommend approval. Wow.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Article 27, water enterprise fund, we did not vote on this one either.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, and last week we didn't have it. I moved to recommend approval of Article 27.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. 28, public educational government PEG access enterprise fund, is there a motion to recommend approval?
Move that we recommend approval of Article 28.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. 29, flood plain map update, I believe we did vote on this one.
We did, 5 to 0.
All right.
Oh, this is.
And then Article 30, ADU bylaw update, did we, yep, we voted on that one, too.
Yep.
So that brings us to, okay, we, we voted to recommend approval on these ones, but we should probably discuss this. So 31, amending clauses 17D, E, and F relative to tax exemptions. So this is the one, or I guess the two articles that the language is really still being worked out by town council.
So this is, this is through you to the board. This is the reason why, the biggest reason why we can't be approving the warrant this evening. So I received these comments back from town council last evening. Essentially, he's not sure exactly what the Board of Assessors is aiming to accomplish within the article. So I have discussed with Brian LaFond today the questions and asked council and Brian to coordinate over the course of the next week so we are very clear on what the actual goal is and that we make sure that we're accomplishing it within the text. And so that is, that is the delay.
All right.
On that one, I know we already voted, but you don't have the 500 on.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple, so we just.
I saw one.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Article 33, citizens' petition, this is the one relative to cemeteries.
This is Article, citizens' petition?
33.
That was a loud yawn, I'm sorry.
I don't know if there was a yawn and sneeze.
Do you want to vote on this one tonight?
I don't know if anybody's going to change their opinion next week.
No.
No.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'm just rereading it quickly. I'm moved that the select board recommend disapproval of 33.
Second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
I just, I just want to, because, because the proponent is in the audience, I just want to say that I think that it's very hard to follow, number one. So the format is very difficult to know at the end what exactly people are voting on. But also some of the content of changing how an elected body can run things under their purview that is clearly stated in both mass general law and our charter, I am not in favor of, especially, you know, the rules and regulations of the cemeteries. Number four, I completely disagree with that change. That alone would make me vote disapproval of it. I think there are some bits in here that, that, you know, could be salvaged at a later date, but in its entirety, since it's a citizen petition and we cannot really modify it, as written, I would recommend disapproval.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think this has presented directly conflicts with the charter and the charter is the superior document.
All right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Another one we'll have to flip. Article 34, Marshall Park Design Dead Exclusion.
So before we discuss this, and I know this is not the final order, but I'm assuming this is potentially the final order, are we going to wait for these two articles to the very end of the meeting?
Do you think it's beneficial to do it earlier on?
Well, I think you're going to have a lot fewer people there or you're going to get a lot of really dusty people.
My thought, Mr. Chair, uh, wait, I'm sorry. My thought, Mr. Alonso, through the chair, is that I heard from residents that there were substantial complaints of, about, or some complaints, I won't necessarily say substantial, about town meeting last year and that folks came in for part of the meeting and then a large amount of folks exited shortly thereafter. So I originally had these two dead exclusions placed closer to the monetary section. The thought here was that.
Okay.
If you want to weigh in, sit with us for the day.
I fully support putting these at the end.
Yeah, me too.
For those reasons.
I, that's a good reason, I just wanted to know. I don't know that it'll have that effect. It's going to be interesting to see if it has that effect.
Yeah, yeah.
I think this highlights that I still owe Izzy a summary, apparently, and.
Oh, yeah, it looks like it does.
So I need to hurry up and get that over to him. So let's, if we can just hold off on 35 till next week.
All right, we're, sure, we're on 34 right now still. Marshall Park Design Dead Exclusion.
I move to recommend approval of Article 34.
I'll second that. Is there any additional discussion?
So in these, this one and the following one, it basically follows my thought as it pertains to our talk on the override, which is, you know, does it have a plan? Does it have a, a plan? First of all, does it have a plan? Does it have a plan I can support? That would say to me that it really goes up to the voters and the ballot would be, so the money part of it would be up to the voters. For those criteria, I will vote yes on this. Okay? I'm not sure personally if I will vote yes on this, but it is something that is planned that people can point to and say, this is what you are getting, this is the amount, you tell us if it's, that this is worth it to you. And I think as a board, supporting another board, I would, I will vote in favor of it on that criteria.
Yeah, I feel, I feel the same way, that they, they have a very clear defined plan. The only thing I'm looking for here, this is for the whole project, because I know they talked about, there could be a motion on the floor for a lesser, that will be part of their presentation, I assume, at town meeting? Okay.
Probably, I don't know. I haven't talked to them about that.
So my understanding is that they have the main motion for the roughly 13.8 million dollar project and they will be prepared for a motion for the lower amount. When we get to the election warrant, that's where it becomes interesting.
Yeah.
But the, this is probably, I, I don't think I'd change the kind of, the way this is printed because that's a, kind of a fallback as opposed to the primary request of the.
I actually wonder, in, in the interest of keeping town meeting, trying to keep town meeting moving as quickly as possible, if having that, that motion for the, the smaller project already written, ready for someone to, okay, so we, they don't, we don't have to waive them to write them out.
Yeah.
That takes a long time.
I didn't think, I, I mean, I must have misunderstood because I didn't think they were going for the whole project, 13 million.
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay. Well, that's, okay.
Um, before I forget, and if it's not the right time to answer, if that's fine, but I know they're going to apply for grants. How does that impact, if you borrow 14 million and they get a million dollar grant, how does that play out in terms of?
You don't have to raise everything that, yeah, if we get money in and don't, we don't.
But we've already borrowed X amount.
No, you can borrow.
It, I think it would depend on the timing of when the grant is received versus.
What if it's after the borrowing's done?
So I think my understanding is meeting with bond counts, that you don't necessarily borrow the money right away. That it's throughout the process, you're, you continue to.
And it's like bonds.
Yeah.
So it can, it can reduce the taxpayers, the impact to the, okay, because I.
Because that's, I mean, that's what happened with the middle school, high school.
I wasn't here for that.
I'm just saying, it came in like three or four million dollars under what was allotted by town meeting for various reasons.
Yeah, yeah, it's not like you go out and get a loan for 14 million and now you got to.
Because they, they talked, they were approved for 18 years, I think, is what the guidance was. Okay.
All right, so the motion's been means seconded, right? All right, so the motion's been means seconded, right? Is there any additional discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to Article thirty-five, Municipal Building Design.
I'm sorry.
What do you want?
I said, I, I mentioned, I need to give a summary.
Oh, that's right, my apologies. Yes, all right, we're gonna wait until next week on that. Okay, thank you. Sorry, threw me off guard.
Thirty-five articles?
All right, and that was the entire one.
We took one off. There's no number, there's, one of them came off, so now there's thirty-four.
I guess next week we should probably think about how many can be consented.
Yeah.
Okay, you want that ready for next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably two.
No, come on.
All right, let me just orient myself to the agenda here.
Yeah.
And that brings us to discussion and potential vote to include Prop. Two and a Half override ballot question on annual town election warrant. We did not vote on this previously, so is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we do not put a Prop. Two and a Half override ballot question on the ballot.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. All right, I left this here, discussion on FY twenty twenty-five budget, FY twenty twenty-six budget, capital plan, and annual town meeting warrant articles. Any other budget, capital plan, warrant-related discussion that we wanna have tonight?
I just have one question about what was printed out for us, the budget. There doesn't seem to be a total budget, like, it just stops at intergovernmental assessments.
Because the columns on Excel, you have to embed a separate table, but that will be in the book, so.
Okay.
It just, the, the column widths line up with the above, and then it.
So we're doing it like, like Dickens wrote Tale of Two Cities, this is sort of a installment plan next week to the end of the budget, okay, got it. I'll be fully left in suspense.
Well, I mean, we have the, we have the end number, but it just needs to get printed on there, yeah.
You could've told me that, so I didn't say that. I didn't mean to embarrass everybody.
And then I, I will say on that printout, I did hear some feedback from some folks, so I'm gonna, it's gonna take a fair amount of work to show that in an alternate way, but there is an alternative to this way to show it. If I could just talk about that for a moment, what I was trying to do here, this is not easy for folks to understand, but under, for example, under the FY twenty-one expended columns, the totals are matching what was printed in the book for years.
For that year, yep.
And so, the issue with that is that, that's not, that you can't total the impact. So one, one thing has to be disconnected, either we're disconnecting from the history of the books, or we're disconnecting from the lines. So I'm gonna show that alternative way to the board next week, and basically choose between two options for how to, how to show it to the voters what we're doing. So this was what I thought, but I think that that could be maybe when it's done more clear, so.
I, I don't know, I, I mean, I had a suggestion, not for this meeting, but I'll call you
Okay.
and talk to you about it, because I think I suggested something, or maybe I didn't, maybe I dreamt I suggested something to you, but I do have an idea about
Okay.
how to bring the historical data forward, because it's important not to lose that. If you lose that, then it becomes, then this format becomes hard to read, and then it becomes almost meaningless.
Yep.
And by the way, I like this format, so I can read it left to right for the last, you know, four years, I think that, including this year, like five years, I think that's excellent.
And I, I think, too, recognizing that we have to fit this in a book, it is small. So I am gonna have at town meeting some separate handouts that just have the first two columns and the last four columns for folks who need a little larger font.
So I, what I would, what I suggest, I, I can make this suggestion, I, I don't think the people in town, I think you should put what's this on the website, but for the booklet, for that very reason, I don't think you have to go back five years. I think if you go back three years and eliminate three columns.
Okay.
I mean, at least you give somebody a perspective, but if you wanna see, if somebody wants to dig in that kind of detail, then they're probably the kind of person who could get it off the, off the website.
Every now and then I hear that New York accent come out.
When I, when I get, when I get tired, I, uh.
Off the webs.
Yeah.
There we go.
Anything else?
I'll, I'll, I'll pay close attention.
Any other budget discussion tonight? No. All right, current business, approval of May seventeen, twenty twenty-five annual town election warrant. We are not ready for this tonight. We are still working through the language of the Marshall Park questions. So, I don't know, are there any questions for the town manager?
I'd like to comment, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The, yeah, so the, the issue here is that we don't know what is going to be approved for Marshall Park at town meeting, whether it's the thirteen million dollar project or the lesser project. So Bond Council has provided two separate articles, or two separate questions that don't have the monetary amount in them, and explain the, the two projects. In talking to Town Council yesterday, I think we're gonna switch that up, and so there can be the two questions really contained within one. So if you vote yes for the thirteen million dollar project, by that vote of yes, you're also voting yes for the lower project, but if you don't vote yes for the thirteen million dollar project, and you only vote yes for the five million dollar project, then that's all that your vote would count for, so it wouldn't count towards if a thirteen million dollar project were approved. If you vote no, then it's obviously.
So that's kind of like an override menu.
Exactly, exactly, but it's the, I will say, I understand the rationale of the Parks Commission of why they're taking this approach, but it does complicate the election warrant.
My only comment about the election ballot is, as the current version's written, which sounds like it's gonna be changed, you have to know the details and read through and know what's included. I think seeing the dollar amount will call out, people will know what project they're voting for, because you really have to read through and, you know, okay, does this have the field? You have to understand, and I'm not sure everyone will fully understand the difference between the two projects. Costly will.
All right, anything else on that tonight? All right, we will review it next week then. All right, what's next? Spike board report to annual town meeting on the Brooks House. All right, so as a result of the warrant article that we voted on at special town meeting, we are, well, there's a lot of things that we have been asked to do, but one of them is giving a report at the annual town meeting on the progress of the plan, I'm not gonna go through all of it, I think a lot of us remember what we voted on. We ended up allowing the Municipal Building Design Committee to take charge of that, and they were a little preoccupied, and I don't think we really got too far on that. So Michael Ray, I just wanted to ask you, what discussions have you guys had? Do you have any coming up planned about the Brooks House?
Yeah, so we have a, we did have to cancel our last meeting due to being on St. Patrick's Day.
Yes.
And, and not being able to maintain court. So I did reach out to all the members to try to see if we can get one of these scheduled prior to next week, which was to be the normal schedule next Monday, and we were not able to find consensus. So, you know, I'm expecting that we're gonna come back to the board with our original recommendation on this, which is, you know, that the building should likely be demolished, but, you know, the board has, the committee has discussed it minimally. We were planning on, we thought this was about a month and a half of work, really. It's not a lot, you know, to come up with a generalized, there's no funding associated with this, so you can't really come up with a site plan without money. So, I mean, you can come up with a, you know, a sketch essentially of what it could be, but it kind of triggers a lot of other things that I think the board needs to answer, which is, do we really wanna parcel off land right there at the entrance to the school? I think, you know, I was, have been vocal in my concerns with this request to begin with.
Yep.
But, you know, there's this, unfortunately, you know, I think that we will be meeting, I do expect that we will have somewhat of an update for the board prior to town meeting, but nowhere near what's expected. And, and just, again, without money, you cannot develop site plans for properties, no one on the board. We do have a civil engineer on the board, but no one is gonna do that, you know, that's a career, that's a profession. So some of this is unattainable without funding.
So I finally went into the Brooks House, and I have a little more context now that I've actually been inside the building. I don't know what I was expecting, but it is even worse than what I was expecting, which was already pretty low. And I just, I don't find what we've been asked, the path that we've been asked to go down, really feasible. And especially with the parking, going through the library like that, I just don't, I don't know, I'm not too sure that I think this is the right path forward. So part of why I also added this on here is so that we can just have this conversation now, generally speaking, about the disposition of the building as well. So I just wanted to see where members are at on that, too.
Well, I mean, one of the things that I've said several times, I would support at least putting it out, see if anybody, and again, the, the chance of this happening are very low, but if somebody wanted to move the house somewhere to save it, fine. I, I don't see how it continues in its location and what you can do with it. And everything I've heard about what you can do with it, there is way too many restrictions, both physical and infrastructural restrictions. It's, it's on the retention pond on the one side, it's the, you know, the, the school and the driveway to the school on the other two sides. It's, you know, it needs, it's not really large enough to really have a home, and it would need tons of work. So, you know, unlike the Jones House, which was much more salvageable, especially since it didn't have to be moved, so people who bought it put in the money, I don't see that happening there, because even if somebody decided to repair it, I don't think there's ways to carve this out. It's not that the zoning won't allow it, because the village district allows you to put something on a postage stamp if you want, but it's just not gonna be anything that's gonna be able to work well.
Didn't the town try to sell it in the past? Move it here, you can have it for a dollar ticket.
No, I don't think we ever posted it. If we did, we posted it in, you know, maybe somewhere that wasn't really, doesn't have a lot of visibility.
Sure.
We did, we do have authorization already to sell the building, and I thought that, you know, the previous permanent town manager did put it out for a period of time to see if there were any takers, and there were none. You know, I, I mean, you know, I, I work in the space of managing, you know, properties, overseeing redevelopment of buildings, most of which are historic, and I, I, I don't shy away from demolition. I know that some people do, but, you know, the market is the market, and there just, there's a finite dollar amount that someone is willing to spend on a building to rehabilitate it, versus building something new or doing it down the street. And, you know, although, you know, historic properties such as this are, you know, they, they get to fall into a different section of the new energy code, which just got updated at the end of February, but they do get to fall into a different section of it, so you won't have all that rigid energy code stuff, but I mean, you have foundation issues, you have interior issues. You're basically doing a full gut with no parking, unlimited access, you have municipal all around you, and I just don't understand who's, who this appeals to, you know, what person with deep pockets is gonna be interested in this, when they can just go down the street anywhere else and do it so much cheaper, you know, I, I think.
Well, I think people who would be interested in it, and I don't mean to interrupt, but would be people who are interested in historical buildings.
Yeah.
The problem I have with it is that people who, they know they're gonna be spending more money, because they could go to someplace else, they would want it in a historical area, surrounded by other historical buildings, not surrounded by a new library and a busy road and new houses across the street or newer than it, and at the risk of, at the risk of irritating the historical commission, because I've said this over the years, I get that it was built a long time ago, but it has been pieced together and sawed up so many times that, that the actual building is not the building anymore, and that's, so the historical value of it has been changed so much as to diminish the historical quality and, and prominence, provenance of it. And that's, so I agree that, I don't know that there'd be anybody out there.
Now, of course, things can be done, I mean, and nothing really is impossible, you know, with buildings. The, the limitation is money, and how much someone's willing to expend.
Right.
And having, you know, typically you need that kind of personal connection to the property, exactly what you're saying, that personal connection, that opportunity to, to turn something into something new, but, you know, you're, you can't. A lot of property and, and site limitations. I mean, imagine if, you know, you spend, you know, a million dollars trying to, let's, let's, let me be a, a more generous number, let's, not less generous. Let's say you spend four hundred thousand dollars trying to rehabilitate this, you can't even have people over, where are they gonna park?
Right.
I mean, so who does that appeal to, you know?
So you think the Municipal Building Design Committee will be able to discuss this more before town meeting?
I mean, I think that, you know, we've discussed it. I think, you know, the, the Architecture Preservation District representative that we have, you know, had a different viewpoint than the rest of the committee on this, and so, you know, town meeting said that this board needs to take a different approach. So I do think, you know, it's a non-binding decision. You know, I think the hardship of where we were in November was, you know, my opinion, was that it was, you know, this board isn't made up of property professionals.
Sure.
And so it's gonna be really hard to attack this without any money. Like, how do you do this without any money? And so, on the Municipal Building Design, you know, you have, you know, three of us, at least four of us, that are property professionals that could reasonably address this, but, you know, I think with more time, it could be addressed by the Municipal Building Design Committee, but I mean, I think the consistent opinion here is the consistent opinion, which is, how much money do you wanna throw at this building?
Not a lot.
No.
All right, so do we want to give a report at annual town meeting?
Yeah, we can give a report.
Does it really make sense to make a report? I mean, it's not really much.
I think even just giving that.
That's ongoing.
An update.
We can give a report.
Because we were asked to do it.
Sure. All right, fair enough. Any other discussion on this tonight? All right. Moving on, Letter to Congressional Delegation Regarding Funding for the Institute of Museum and Library Services. So this is a request that we got from our library director. The president signed an executive order, quote, "Continuing the reduction in the elements of the federal bureaucracy that the president has deemed are unnecessary," and this time that funding is for libraries and museums. The mayor of Worcester has drafted the letter for our congressional delegation, speaking to the importance of libraries in this funding, and sent it out to municipalities to sign onto, and Mura would like us to do so. So I'll go ahead and read it. Dear Members of the Massachusetts Congressional Delegation, On behalf of mayors and city officials across Massachusetts, we thank you for your leadership in representing the needs of our communities. We are writing to express our deep concern over an executive order signed March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five that would target federal funding to libraries and museums through the Institute of Museum and Library Services. IMLS is the single largest source of critical federal funding for libraries, however, it only counts for zero point zero zero three percent of the federal budget. In Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, MBLC, received three point six million from IMLS's Grants to States programs. This money funds several statewide services for everyone, including the full and partial salaries for MBLC staff, statewide research databases, summer reading, and statewide ebook program. Statewide trainings for librarians to increase access for people with vision loss, early literacy development and grade level reading programs, and interlibrary loan. It is also critical to note that IMLS funding also supports museums in our communities. Libraries offer the opportunity for members of the public to access materials at no cost, or low cost to them. For individuals with visual impairments or other disabilities, it can be difficult to sustain a need or desire for reading materials that are usable for their needs. Most importantly, interlibrary loan offers the chance for library patrons to obtain materials that are not a part of their home library's collection. In towns that have smaller collections, interlibrary loan offers a gateway to materials through the Commonwealth. As elected officials on the front lines, we know that libraries are more than spaces to hold reading materials. Libraries also serve as spaces that offer connections to social services and resources, support for small business owners and entrepreneurs, and they can serve as a space for community. Since their creation, American libraries have served to keep and circulate knowledge. They've remained dedicated to promoting intellectual freedom in our democracy. We urge the Massachusetts Congressional Delegation to work together across party lines to protect IMLS funding from harmful cuts and policy changes. As local leaders, we are directly accountable to the residents we've served. Thank you for your continued leadership and commitment to protecting the well-being of all residents. So are we interested in signing onto this letter?
No.
Yes.
Michael Ray carries, so it's a strong no.
Yeah, I know.
I, I, like, why else I'll no?
Uh, you know, let me look at the time so I can try to keep this short. You know, I get it, right? I mean, half the country didn't vote for Trump, okay? And, and that's just reality, but we don't take these meetings and, you know, I don't comment on, on, on the genocide we're funding in Israel against the Palestinians, you know, I don't comment on a lot of things that the federal government does, because it's just not our purview, you know, and I think that, you know, a lot of, half the country's gonna be pissed off every time President Trump opens his mouth, and the other half is gonna be, you know, jumping for joy. Maybe I'm being, you know, a bit exaggerating on the half part. We live in Massachusetts, right? We didn't, most people here didn't vote for him, most people are never gonna vote for him, and, you know, and, and, and half the people at the top of this list are clearly not gonna have any sway over what President Trump actually does. You know, Congress has the authority of the purse, they should exercise it. They have full control over where every single federal dollar should go. The president doesn't have line item veto authority, but if they wanna sit back and let him do it, that's their choice. But they have the power to stop the stuff that they already see going on that's probably not too legal. So, you know, we got four more years, there's gonna be a lot more stuff that we're not gonna like and not, you know, there's a lot more stuff that people aren't gonna like and aren't gonna agree with. I support the library heavily, I definitely don't disagree with what they're trying to say here, but I don't think this letter's gonna do one thing, so it's, it's, it's not worth the paper and the stamp, so I don't support it.
Yeah, I don't.
So, I don't vote for this as a, as any kind of protest vote against the president. I couldn't care less. This affects Lunenburg, and it affects Massachusetts, and it affects those who need these services most, and as we are elected to protect and represent the, the citizens, and our library being caught up in this, uh, this removable, this removal of funds is well-attended and well-supported by this community, and as such, I support the continued use of that, and they are losing, they will lose funds, and those funds will remove services from our library. So I am writing this in support to the congressional delegation, or our, our congresswoman in this case, and our senators, I assume this is what we go to as well, as that. I mean, it, it'll have, will it have an effect? I mean, no, I, they don't have the majority, but at least they'll have the voice of people saying that it didn't go unnoticed that this was removed, and we don't approve of it being removed. I have no illusions of how the levers of power work, but I will not be silent as things that are important to myself or my community are removed without voicing disagreement or dissent, and that's what I feel this vote is for me.
Yeah, I, I don't think saying that the letter won't do any good is not a valid reason to not submit the letter. Our voice should be heard, this is one mechanism to do it. I mean, that's.
I agree, we're standing up for Lunenburg. I know DC feels really far away, but decisions that are made there impact us in the same way that decisions that are made on Beacon Hill affect us. Just a couple of weeks ago, we sent a heated letter with demands for Lunenburg to our state delegation, right? I know where, we live in a hyper-partisan era, so anything that comes across as criticizing one side or the other, especially at the federal level, it is taken out of context in the sense that we are just being political and partisan. I don't see it like that. So I support signing onto this letter, I don't know it's gonna do much, but at the same time, I also don't really know that our letters to our state delegation are gonna do much. We sent a letter to the governor, she didn't even respond to us, nor did she address
But it doesn't mean you don't send a letter.
what she asked us to do.
That's right.
So, I am fully supportive of signing onto this as requested by our library, and if it's just a statement of our values, then so be it.
And as such, I, I mean, well, I'll.
Well, I, I have a note on the motion, but go ahead.
My only thoughts here are, I'm not going to give a political statement on, on either one way or the other, but I think that, you know, our, our library director asked us to support this, the letter, and because of that, I will support our staff's request.
Yeah, exactly. He asked us to step up and stand, stand up for him, and so I am willing to do so as well. All right, so one thing about the motion, the city of Worcester is collecting signatories through a page on their website. is collecting signatories through a page on their website, through a form. So for the motion, I would ask you to authorize me to digitally sign on to this letter.
Well, I will make the motion that we sign on to the congressional delegation letter as read by the chair and authorize the chair to sign digitally as provided by the city of Worcester.
Yeah.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All right. The motion passes four to one. All right. Up next, minutes, warrants, and action items. We have minutes for January 23rd, 2024, and March 11th, 2025.
March 11th, you just got in your...
Right, that's right. Okay.
I had a note, unless it's changed since earlier today, Mr. Alonso's name is spelt wrong throughout the entire day of that set of minutes.
Thank you.
Alanzo.
Alanzo. I was like, why does that look weird? Took me a second.
Okay, thank you.
It's just to find and replace.
Yeah, that should be a relatively easy thing to fix. Otherwise, I was not on the board. I did look...
That was actually going to be my chosen name in my witness protection program.
[laughing]
Nope, I know, exactly. Foiled again.
Oh, it was your name.
It was your name tag.
Right.
Needs it.
You know it.
Okay. Do we want to hold off on voting on these, then?
Why don't we get them corrected for you?
Yeah, let's get them corrected. And then March 11th, I, none of us, I don't think have reviewed those.
By whom? I don't know.
All right, warrants. We do have some warrants tonight. Thank you. Whoa, that is actually a lot heavier than they normally are.
Are they AP?
Which is, oh, yes, they are.
Okay. I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, we have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of 717,000...
How long has this last?
Until she submits her file.
Oh, okay.
And the amount of 17...
Oh, she's still working?
I'll throw it off now.
She's getting one next, but let's go.
Gotcha.
All right, let's, hold on. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of 717,386.23. And this is all that one warrant. Committee reports.
Oh, I can't remember. School committee met since our last meeting. But they are meeting tomorrow night, and I did learn they hired a facilities director. His first day is tomorrow. That's good.
I meet with the subcommittee of the Board of Assessors on the senior tax write-off. We are finalizing the form, the applications, and then the Board of Assessors has to, have to decide and vote on home value limits and income limits. That's the last part, but that's them. So, but tomorrow evening, we should have approved, and I don't know if the, it'll be in its final visual form, but content-wise, it should be finalized. And then Finn came met last week. I did, I saw one hour of the four-hour meeting. I saw the presentation by Ms. Lockwood, and I know that their public hearing is two, two days from now. Next, this is coming Thursday.
Economic Development Committee met on the 27th. I was not able to be there. I have not had a chance to review that meeting yet. And Master Plan Steering Committee is scheduled to meet, I believe it's April 9th, next week. Hopefully, we'll have a quorum, and that can meet. That's all I have.
Are you zoned out, or you don't?
No, 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 no. I was waiting for more. Sorry.
That was it.
The municipal building design committee, as we heard, are meeting, we have a meeting coming up on Monday, and, you know, we're looking to have some open houses that we'll coordinate with the, with Chris Ruth and the town manager. The other thing is, I, Conservation Commission, we are, I, in my personal capacity, am trying to support them with their tenant. They, and working with Chris Ruth just to get into a, to perform a capital needs assessment of the property that they have. And so I will be, we are scheduled to do that inspection. It was rescheduled, so now it's rescheduled to this Friday morning. That's really all I have. I don't have much.
Okay. Well, while I was taking a break from this board, I was spending time with the superintendent screening committee. Last week, we met on Monday, Thursday, Friday, and we met last night on Monday as well. And we have successfully interviewed and screened candidates. So we voted on a slate of finalists to send to the school committee, and they will be announcing that tomorrow night. That's all I'll say.
Excellent.
And I went out of order here. Going back to action items, are there any action items?
Nope.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, we're meeting next Tuesday, April 8th, and the following Tuesday, April 15th. Any public comments from the town manager?
No.
Any public comments from the public? Mr. Bowen.
Well, as coming up, I think it's great that we're meeting on April Fool's Day and Tax Day in the same season.
Yeah, well, why not?
That's a...
Hi, everyone. John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. I just wanted to make a statement about the citizen petition warrant article that you kind of said that, and I heard everything you said, but when a citizen puts in a citizen's petition, it's because he does not expect the elected pollist to be able to step up and agree, particularly when it has to do with reining in an elected board. So, and that's what the warrant article has to do with, is the reining in of a rogue board. I'm going to continue my statement from earlier that I did not finish, which conveniently, I stopped at the area where I was going to mention this.
Look at that, it worked out.
It's perfect. You guys were great. You said exactly what I expected you to say.
It went like this in rehearsals, right?
Oh, please, I swear to God. It's almost like we met before this, and we were like, you know, stage left, stage right here. I felt like I was in college again. So parliamentary speaking, you have a warrant article regarding the powers and duties of individuals herein concerned, which is the cemetery commission, okay? But they also include the town manager and DPW director, right, who are actually able to exercise their authority but are failing to under the charter as that check and balance. Now, within this parliamentary process, we, the people, have the final say how a board in this town or an elected official operates, financially or otherwise. Our town meeting is our Senate floor for debate. And I encourage all citizens to consider the actions of the cemetery commission over the last three years. Twice, they have tried to use the police to remove me, and twice, that has failed. I'm not quite happy about how, sorry, because they're not the ones that are happy, and I'm not happy with how they want to handle it, okay? But how they were told by me, they were told that they were wrong. And this is what happens. This is why we have the parliamentary process. I did not expect this board to agree that reining in an elected official by an elected official would work, and that's why we bring it to the floor. So I am right again. What has been accomplished was this board and what has been wasted: money. Over $15,000 in two and a half years. I reiterated that. The records issue is another issue. This is a serious issue, which I mentioned that Lori Trahan's office is spearheading, rewriting the Privacy Act of 1974. I say as citizens that we can't stand, we can't right these wrongs where it's not being done by the check and balance in town. And we can enforce it by voting at town meeting, removing access to people to have access to personal information they're not supposed to have to begin with, and also to monitor and maintain their actions and behavior as a committee. Not only that, we can compel them to have a plan for our cemeteries, which today, they have none. Above all, the dead have a right to privacy as well. Do you really want to have a board or a commission to know the manner and depth of your family member, whether they committed suicide, drug overdose, natural causes, car accident, lost the whole top half of their body at war? All this is public record. If you allow, elected officials who pop in and pop out every three years or are appointed are available to see. This is privacy that needs to be protected. I will not stop until this privacy is corrected. I will not stop until this commission puts together a plan for these cemeteries, which in its current state, like I said, it doesn't have one. They have had years to get things together. They have failed. They have failed miserably in the last four. But they're more interested in asking for money from the taxpayer, attacking town employees, and violating the rights of its citizens. This appears to be exactly the direction that this board has taken themselves in the last four years. I thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Mr. Bowen. All right, Ms. McLeod.
Good evening. Glenn McLeod, 436 Reservoir Road. I just wanted to make a few quick comments. I was encouraged to hear about the UMass Emergency Center. I have seen that, you know, celebrated by our delegation. But I do also think it's important to realize that we are still down a full-functioning hospital. So although that is good news, there's still a big void. And I would also like to commend you on the, on the vote and discussions on the citizens petitions as it relates to the override for the schools. I think you were spot on, and I appreciate the vote and the comments. I think you did a great job, in my opinion. And I also was very happy to hear the discussion relative to the Brooks house. I'm a firm believer that in no circumstances should the town lose the property. They should control that, the dirt. I'm open to, you know, open mind for every other use beyond that. But, you know, it's the little bit of research I've done, it does seem as though it is just an old house. Like, it doesn't have specific, you know, historical value. In fact, the farm, you know, that once was there is now schools. So I loved your conversation. Great job. I liked the direction that that's heading. And that also leads into my, you know, one of my many concerns with the municipal building designs plans for the town hall is the lack of a real roadmap for dealing with the town's buildings. And I think that's an excellent start by immediately dealing with the Brooks house and show the townspeople that we have a plan for the town's property and the buildings within the envelope. Because as stated before, and I can't remember, it was specifically here, but there's really nothing about the municipal building design plan that I support other than the hard work and dedication of the members of that, of that committee. They're heartfelt, and a lot of, you know, experts that have weighed in on that project. And with the, you know, outstanding leadership of Mr. Jeffries, it's just in my sole opinion is this, you know, and I realize it's still a month or so to go before a final decision is made, but I'll stop now, otherwise I'll keep rambling. But thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, any other public comments from the public? Any on Zoom? All right, not seeing any. Any public comments from the board?
Yes. I just want to take this opportunity to encourage people at home to volunteer. I know that simply saying it doesn't always do much, so I won't dwell on it too much. But we do have some critical vacancies, especially on the personnel committee. You know, it's really challenging to be able to do all the great things that our community expects us to do when we can't find five people willing to step up and support the staff who they expect to do it. So we really need to get this personnel committee filled, and I just want to encourage anyone at home who's been paying attention to help support that. And then also for anyone that may still be tuned in, you know, related to other requests that were on our agenda this evening. You know, it's always good to be an advocate, but it's even better to have a seat at the table. And so I just want to encourage those at home who may be frustrated with their local government to run for some of these seats. We still have many open seats that are elected, and we have a lot of open seats that are appointed. And so I just want to encourage that sense of volunteerism in order to help us, you know, to be part of the solution, to be part of the solution. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments from the board? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. It is 10:04 PM, and the select board is adjourned. We will see you all again next week. Have a good night.